Four, three, two, one. All right, good evening and welcome. I'm Jean McKnight, Planning Board Chair. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will have public comment in connection with three hearings that are on the agenda. First, we'll confirm that a quorum of the members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. After that, I'll introduce Planning Department and other town staff. So, Planning Board members. Martin Jacobs. Adam Block.
Adam, you're muted.
I don't see the mute sign on him, but he wasn't heard. I'll continue and come back to Adam. Paul Alpert.
Here.
Ted Owens.
Here.
And. Let's see.
Adam seems to have disappeared.
Yes, well, we certainly have a quorum. With the four of us. And he'll probably.
There he is.
Oh, here he is, all right, let me call again the name of Planning Board member, Adam Block.
Present.
Good. Right now, Planning Department. Our Planning Director, Lee Newman.
Present.
And our Assistant Planner, Alexandra Cle.
Present.
And also present, I believe, is Planning Department Staff Member Clay Hutchinson. Well, Clay is our kind of technical support person, so sometimes he's not actually tuned in all the time, and that's fine. So what we have with us is Lee Newman and Alexandra Cle. So, as each agenda item is reached, I'll introduce participants who are here to present or discuss projects and proposals. And for those participating in the meeting, please be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. And it's helpful when you make a comment or ask a question, even if you've introduced yourself before. There may be members of the public who are simply listening in on their phones, and it's helpful to repeat your name from time to time. And for members of the public, I want to let them know that all supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.NeedhamMA.gov, unless otherwise noted. And the ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. So as I said, each of the speakers in the agenda will be introduced. And then after the presentation is made by the proponents, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, question, or motion that that board member wishes to make. All votes will be by roll call. So moving to the first item on our agenda, that is a proposed de minimis change involving major project site plan special permit number 95-2. The Zucchini Gold LLC is the name of the applicant, doing business as The Rice Barn, which is a restaurant. At, and the property is located at 1037 Great Plain Avenue. So I understand that the owners, the principal of the owner is Charles Intha. Is Mr. Intha tuned in here by phone or by Zoom?
Yes, Jean, I see his number here, so I'm going to see if I can allow him to speak. Okay, would you try to speak? Mr. Intha? Oh.
Let's see. His phone seems to be muted, if that's.
Yes, he needs to press star, what is it, star six. Mr. Intha, would you press star six on your phone? I think that should do the trick. Oh.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that? Okay, all right, sorry about that one, yeah.
No, no, this, and we're so glad it works.
All right, so this is Charles Intha, the principal of the applicant for the property that's known as The Rice Barn Restaurant. And he's calling in by telephone to make his presentation about the relief that he's seeking. So, Mr. Intha, go ahead.
Yes, so you would like to hear from what I have in mind for this proposal?
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah, like I put in the form of letter, our cash flow has been, you know, impacted adversely by this pandemic situation. So I look, try to do more advertising, try to campaign how I can really be able to generate more cash flow. So far, it has been limited to a certain number. So with that in mind, I happen to think about, you know, why don't we open, you know, you know, another food in the morning? So with that, I kind of see a pretty good logic, because we are close to a train station. So by selling food in the morning, it could be pretty attractive. But again, it just really, the thought, whether or not it'll work, we don't know for sure. But we are thinking that we might as well try it and see if it works, if it works, it'll be fine. If it doesn't work, then we can modify it to some degree, but in order to sell food in the morning, we need to open earlier than what we've been granted by the planning board earlier. And the type of morning food that we have in mind is more like a coffee shop. But we are going to cook something that is slightly different from average coffee shop in the neighborhood. So that could be interesting, because we hope to bring a different flavor to what we sell. It could be Thai coffee, it could be Thai tea, could be some crispy fried dough, that sort of thing, and then we can really make a simple package, you know, for the train traveler to pick at the convenience point, you know, in our restaurant. So that is, in a nutshell, that is my vision.
All right, thank you, Mr. Intha. I'd like to ask, assume Mr. Intha you know, or perhaps our Planning Director knows, what is the current opening time for your restaurant? For the permit, under the permit?
Our current opening time has been 11 o'clock in the morning.
All right, all right.
I mean, the, let me, let me just really clarify this. We practice opening at 11:30, although by law, I believe we've been granted to start at 11 o'clock.
All right, thank you for that clarification. So I'll ask the members of the planning board if they have any. Well, first of all, I'll mention that Mr. Intha also for this presented this as, you know, we might just say this is a de minimis change, you know, that doesn't require a hearing, that would have to consider that. And also, he asked if we might waive the $250 application fee under the circumstances of the difficulties restaurants in general are having right now. And then, of course, if we go in that direction of the de minimis change, we would be voting on an amendment to the prior decision. So, Mr. Jacobs, any question or comment?
I have no question or comment. I'm in favor of the petition, and I have no problem waiving the fees.
All right, Mr. Alpert.
I similarly have no problem with the petition. And I have no problem waiving, waiving the fee. I fully understand the situation, and I hope it works for, for Mr. Intha. I wish him the best of luck with it.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Block.
I concur with my colleagues. I can't imagine the challenging time that this must be for your restaurant. I fully understand the circumstance. I wish you every success that opening at seven o'clock enables you to compete successfully and earn back some business that I know you've lost as a result of the pandemic. And I too also support the application and also waiving the fee as a result of the current circumstance that the business finds itself in.
Thank you, Mr. Block, Mr. Owens.
I agree with my colleagues.
All right, so we need, I suppose it would be done with three motions. One pertaining to the waiver of the $250 fee, and then the determination as to de minimis change, and then approving the change and approving the decision that has already been drafted by our Planning Director.
Yeah.
Oh, I have a motion. Yes, Mr. Intha?
Can, can I kind of kind of put some thought in here while you were in a conversation? When I typed in seven o'clock AM, later on, I found out that the first train leave the station after six o'clock, so I was thinking, in fact, if that could change from seven to six o'clock, that would really help to move a lot of what if for this particular request.
Well, this wasn't, I mean, this is not a public hearing that was advertised for a particular time, but it was part of the application. Does that present difficulties, you know, with along the lines of letting the public know what's before us? Ms. Newman, would you respond to that question?
I think he was really in his application indicating that he wanted to open it at seven o'clock and really move to a morning hour. I don't know that, it's not a legal, it's not a public hearing notice, so I think you do have flexibility around it.
All right. So since that issue has, since that change has been requested, I'll ask again if members of the board have any question or comment about the 6:00 AM. And I see Mr. Albert's hand, I'm calling him first.
I, I'm just wondering if Ms. Newman knows whether we allow other food establishments in that area to open as early as six o'clock. There are a couple of bakeries there.
Well, bakeries, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily have a permit on. I think the town bylaw allows people to open as early as six, the general bylaws.
Okay.
Oh, you mean because this is a restaurant rather than a bakery? And many of the coffee and breakfast food establishments in the vicinity are categorized as bakeries, is that correct?
If they're categorized as a bakery, then it's an as of right use, and it wouldn't have triggered a site plan special permit where there would have been a condition on or a proposal relative to hours of operation. But the general bylaw itself allows for an operation to start at 6:00 AM.
Does that satisfy your question, Mr. Albert?
Well, I, I am remembering that the the place on Chapel Street has a special permit from us.
Was probably in front of us because there was a parking waiver involved there.
No, do you, do you know what time we allowed?
I can, if you want to, I can try, I, I don't.
I'm looking it up right now, I'll be back in 30 seconds with the info.
Thank you, Alex.
Are you speaking of Bagels Best, Paul?
No, and actually, no, I'm, I'm.
French Press.
French Press.
French Press, yes.
Actually, Bagels Best, I think, I think they open as early as six or 6:30.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
We have a permit on Bagels Best because of the seating.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that they're open as early as six or 6:30.
All right, well, we're just waiting to, to see what we did allow for.
Okay, this is Alex Cle, French Press. The petitioner may operate the French Press store seven days a week from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Okay, very good.
All right, all right, so we've seen other establishments in the vicinity are allowed for a 6:00 AM opening. So in making a motion, we want to make that explicit. Ms. Albert.
Yes, I'm ready to make the motion, Madam Chair. I'm just asking you whether you want me to make three separate motions that we'll vote on with each one, or if I shall just make one, make the three motions at one time. How would you like me to handle?
I think, I think we can make all three motions at one time on something.
Then I move that we, we treat this application as a de minimis change, and I move that we approve the application to amend the special permit to allow for opening at the Rice Barn at 6:00 AM for the same number of days that they are presently allowed to open. And I move that we waive the $250 filing fee.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. So I'll call the roll. Miss, Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
And the chair is aye. And so that really is approved. Thank you, Mr. Intha. We are all set. Eventually, in the next several days, we'll arrange to sign the approval form.
I think we ought to, I think we ought to have a motion to approve the form of the special permit that's been provided to us.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, we often do that. So, all right, go ahead and offer a motion along those lines.
I'll, I'll move that we approve the draft of the amendment to decision for the site plan special permit number 95-2, that's in our packet. It's a single change that we're going to allow opening at 6:00 AM instead of 7:00 AM.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jacobs, is there a second?
I just wish to point out, I don't think we need to amend the motion about what was presented to us. I haven't seen a revised, I did catch a typographical error that I pointed out to the staff, and was, and I was told that the change would be made. There was a reference to Bruce Eisenhardt, where it should have been to Adam Block in one paragraph, and I, to the extent that we need to change the motion to, to include that change, I so move.
Happy, I'm happy to agree.
Okay, so the motion has been made.
Oh, second.
With, and seconded with that slight change in wording to correct an error in reference. And so now I'll continue the roll call. Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so that the decision in its, in its form with those two changes is approved also.
I think it should be on record that I vote aye to, and Paul does.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have gone back to you. Thank you. So it's unanimous aye.
Unanimous.
Madam Chair, before you move on, could I just ask if we haven't done it yet, that we just indicate that we're going to continue this meeting to January 4th in the event that there are technical difficulties?
Thank you for reminding me of that. Down. Right, so we have a motion and a second, that if we have technical difficulties and cannot continue this meeting and its hearings, we will continue to January 4th at 7:15 PM.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second to that effect, and I'll call the roll. Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye, Madam Chair, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Should, procedurally, it may be a little backwards, but should we assume that that motion includes that Paul would become chair for those moments when you are, if there's a technical requirement and necessitating you to leave the meeting and return?
I was actually, I was going to make that another motion, but it certainly would be just as easy to ask the person who made the motion if they would accept that as part of the motion. For this very meeting, if the chair has set a technical difficulty, that Mr. Albert, the vice chair, will take over in order to continue the meeting until the chair returns. Is that accepted as, as amendment to the motion?
Yes, I think I was the one who weighed the motion, I'm happy to accept that.
All right, and seconded as well?
Yes.
And, all right, so I'm not, I don't remember quite where I was with the roll call, so let me begin again. Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
And Mr. Owens.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so we have those procedural motions taken care of. So now we move to the next item on our agenda, which is the major project site plan special permit for the property at 400 Honeywell Street regarding a request to build a new residential building with eight units. And I'm going to recognize and ask that these persons indicate their presence by saying here, or yes, some response, so.
Chairman?
Yes.
Madam Chair, Marty Jacobs, I'd just like the first move that we waive the reading of the public notice.
Thank you very much. So we get that behind us, Mr. Jacobs' move that we waive the reading of the public notice.
Paul Albert, I second.
Second. So no question or comment on that, call the roll. Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
And Mr. Owens.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so that the reading of the notice is waived. So I'd like to recognize those persons who are here for the applicant. George Jenta, project attorney.
Present.
Okay, and is Kent Duckham, project applicant here?
I'm present.
Right. James McDonaldad, project architect.
Jim is not here with us.
All right, well, we have you.
However, I have Blair Hines, who is our landscape architect on.
Can you hear me? This is Blair Hines.
I don't have you on my list, but let me add your name, Blair.
Hines, H-I-N-E-S. Verent Landscape Architects.
Okay, landscape, okay, and John Grenier, project architect.
Here, I'm the civil engineer on the project.
Oh, excuse me, I said architect, didn't I, and I should have said engineer, project engineer. And is Paul Baloo, project surveyor here also?
Good job on the last name, she. Yes, I'm here.
Oh, you are here, well, I'm glad I did, I studied furniture in high school.
Well, it was a beautiful job.
And Dennis Cronin, who is the project developer.
I am here, my video is not working.
All right, Ms. Cronin, we'll know that you're here.
Thank you.
All right, then, so as I said, this hearing regards property at 400 Honeywell Street and a request to build a new residential building with eight units. And involves the demolition of an existing building. So who would like to begin the presentation?
I will begin, Madam Chair.
Mr. Jenta.
Yes. All right, so as indicated, this is a proposal for the property of 400 Honeywell Street. This property is located in the Hillside Avenue Business District, which is a mixed-use district that allows both commercial, a number of different commercial uses, as well as residential use. The district now consists of a number of different uses, some of which comply with the allowed uses and some of which do not. The, this project has to do with a piece of property that's just over the railroad bridge, if you're coming from Highland Avenue on the right-hand side. And this property contains a total of 20,123 square feet of area with a little over 104 feet of frontage on Honeywell Street. The property is currently occupied by a two-story commercial building, some parking and pretty limited landscaping. The existing building appears to have been built in 1975, it's made of concrete block. It's about 22 to 23 feet high, and it contains approximately 8,520 square feet of floor space, according to the assessors. The building itself is located just over eight feet from the left property line and back 20 feet from the street. The applicant is proposing to demolish this building in its entirety and essentially raise the entire site and build in its place a proposed new two-story residential building that would be about 27 feet high from grade, for the most part. However, there's a lower level that has access in the back, and so the average grade winds up creating a height calculation of 29 feet, but the actual height from grade to the top is only 27 feet for most of the building. The building is proposed to contain a total of eight residential units. They're two-bedroom units with two baths, and each unit would have a patio slash balcony that would provide for some outdoor space. The basement or underground lower level is proposed to include 16 parking spaces along with a couple of small mechanical areas that would support the building. Again, accessed from the rear through an overhead door that is at the lower level. And a substantial amount of lush landscaping is proposed all around the property. Along that line, this is where I guess I'll mention, we went before design review, and they were fairly receptive to the project, project, and basically gave us their thumbs up, I know you have comments from them. Now, this project is markedly similar to the project next door, which I think may predate all the planning board members, I can't recall exactly who was on at that point. It was, at the time, it was identified as 390 Honeywell Street, but now that property is actually known as 154, 156, 160 Hillside Avenue. That was, that was approved back in, I think, 2000, 2001-ish, and basically involved the demolition of two existing residential structures and the construction of three new residential structures containing a total. and the construction of three new residential structures containing a total of eight units. That property contains 22,948 square feet, so it's just a little bit bigger, but not appreciably bigger. And again, continuing eight units, it's, as I said, a markedly similar project. The main difference being, in that case, they were distributing the eight units among three separate buildings. We are including, we are putting all eight units in one building. And we're doing that in part because we think that works best for the site and also helps us sort of minimize the impact as by doing it this way, we can place the building sort of right on the footprint of the existing building and, you know, therefore minimize any additional impacts that there might be. So with that, I'd like to share my screen and walk you through some plans and renderings and sketches to show you what the building looks like and what the proposal is. So first off, just so you can get a flavor of sort of what it is expected to look like, you know, visually. This is a rendering that shows the view basically from across the street on the sort of upside on Honeywell Street. And you can see here, we've got the balconies in front for the units that are in the front, an entrance on the side, and there's a person here to show you a bit of the scale, so you can kind of see the scale of the building. Here we have the view essentially from the right side, on the opposite side of the street, looking at the right side of the building. This was the front of the building here. This is essentially the right side of the building if you're looking at it from the front. And again, you can see with the car and the person, it gives you an idea of the scale. It also gives you an idea visually of the different materials and how it looks visually.
George, where is Honeywell Street?
So in this, in this rendering, Honeywell, Honeywell Street is here.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna stop that. And let me pull up the site plans and show you those. Okay. So this shows you the existing conditions. This is the existing building. And you can see there's a little bit of landscaping here in the front, and otherwise this is all asphalt. This is all asphalt parking. Now, one thing I'll use this to point out is you can see there's a shared sort of common right-of-way here in the middle. That's, that's an easement that straddles the property line on both sides for the benefit of both properties. As the two properties were at one point in common ownership, and when they divided them out, they did this easement so that each would have this, this accessway. Obviously, this, this is part of our, this is part of the reason why we did one building, because this kind of constrains the development. But our proposal maintains this right-of-way, as you can see here, and keeps it, keeps it here. So the right-of-way is still available for use for this property, and it's free use for our property. And here you can see, so the driveway comes in, comes to the back of the property, slopes down. There's an area to make the turn, and this is the driveway. This is the entrance at the lower level into the parking garage on the basement or underground level. In addition, there's five parking spots located here. And there's also two parking spots up here, including a handicap spot. All right, now, one of the things to note on this plan as well is you can see in red the existing building here. And so you can see the new building shaded on top. From this, it's pretty clear that the new building really almost squares off these sort of empty areas in the existing building. And with the exception of this little bit back here, really all of the new development is on the interior side of the property away from this, the project over here. This, by the way, this is the project that I referenced that was approved back around 2001 for the eight units in the three different buildings. So I'm gonna bring up the architectural plans, show you those. Just walk you through. All right, so here we see this is the basement level. This is the garage coming in from, from the driveway coming down, comes in here. And here you have the 16 spaces all throughout the basement level. So there's no really usable occupied space in the basement level other than the parking spaces and the limited utility rooms here. Then you come up to the next level. And you can see there's basically four units on each level. Each levels, you know, the two levels are identical, the mirror images of each other. And even within the level, it's mirror image from side to side. So you've got a unit here, a unit here, a unit here, and a unit here. The balconies or patios are on the back and on the front, so that there's none on the side that would increase any impact on the side over here and don't interfere with anything over on this side. So again, there's the top level. All right, elevations, these, these are, they look similar, obviously, to the renderings. You've got the front elevation. Looking at it here from Honeywell Street. So you see the front of the building. You've got the four balconies that serve the front four units. You can see this is the side entrance here. And then here on the side, you can see that's that entrance with steps on the front side and a handicap ramp on the back side coming up to the entrance. And here we have the back and the other side. So in the back, you can see it comes down. There's a garage entry on the lower level to get into the parking. The balconies again here for the back units. And what I'll point out as well is, so for cars that are parked down here, they can either walk up this way going in that entrance, but there's also a set of steps that goes to a a walkway that goes, that runs along the building that goes into this doorway that's on the opposite side of the building. So this will be the left side if you're looking at it from the front on Honeywell Street. All right. So now let me show you the landscaping. And I have to say, this is, in my experience, this is pretty, pretty impressive landscaping for a project. Now, one, one note is, I know, I know both police and engineering have, have basically said they don't want, this tree is too close to the driveway and has, they have some issues with this for visibility. So this tree here will be coming out. So you can disregard that tree. And then design review had a comment about these four, mainly about these two, whether or not the canopy would interfere with the walkway here. And so we need, we'll look at that, but the, these two won't interfere with it as this walkway slopes down. So the canopy here, these canopies would be above the level where they would be an issue. But design review did suggest that we maybe look at a different species to put here, just to keep the canopy so that it doesn't, you know, doesn't cause any issues with the, with the walkway. But you can see, I mean, there's landscaping all through along the front, all along the side, all through the back corner. So we're really adding a lot of landscaping, especially along the side adjacent to the residential properties or residential units and along the front as well. There's also a fence proposed to go along this entire line, sideline here. Okay. So so I think that really covers the project. And at this point, any questions that the board has?
All right, I will turn, yes, to the board members, and Mr. Albert has his hand raised. Comments or questions?
Well, before we get started, could, could we ask George to please go through his waiver requests so that we can understand what the waiver requests are and what the reasons for them are?
Okay. I would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
All right, so do you mean, you want, you mean waiver requests or zoning relief or both?
Both.
All right, that's what I thought. Okay, so, so first off, probably that, you know, the most obvious is we need a special permit for site plan review as, as the bylaw requires that any new building in the Hillside Avenue Business District triggers site plan review and the need for a special permit. That's number one. Number two, apartment or multifamily use in the Hillside Avenue Business District requires a special permit. And then, so that gets to the use. Then the underground parking, we do not include that in the calculation of floor ratio because we have asked for a special permit waiving the inclusion of the underground parking in the floor ratio calculation, which the bylaw allows the board to do in section 4.4.2. Then we've asked for a parking waiver with respect to the design requirements to the extent applicable. I'll come back to that in a minute. And then we've asked for a waiver from certain of the site plan requirements, which are sort of the standard waivers that we often ask for in site plan applications, such as showing all structures, complete all structures within 100 feet of the property line. Building elevation is relating to portions of the building not affected. Well, that doesn't actually apply in this case. Detailed information concerning lighting. We're proposing only accent lighting on the building. We're not proposing any significant lighting. So therefore, rather than doing a photometric plan or photometric analysis, we've asked for a waiver for that. Requirements to show loading and unloading, where this is a residential building, there is no proposed loading or unloading. Provisions for refuse removal. Again, where it's a, where it's a residential building, refuse removal is not a significant issue, although in that regard, I will note in the back corner, we are expecting to put dumpsters inside a fenced-in enclosure for the building. And then requirements with respect to projected traffic volume. Again, this is a relatively small-scale residential development, and therefore a full traffic study wouldn't be warranted. So with respect to parking waivers, you know, we've got, it's an interesting situation because we have parking underneath the building. And so certain of the parking requirements, you know, technically can't be met inside the building. But more specifically, we've asked for waivers from requirements for parking lot illumination, kind of along the same lines as my, my earlier comment that the, the illumination is going to be just accent lighting really on the building or bollard lighting around the property, so minimal lighting. So again, doesn't call for a full photometric plan and analysis. The bylaw requires 10% or more of parking be landscaped. However, obviously you can't put the landscaping inside the building. And so therefore, we've asked for a waiver on that, and same thing with respect to trees. Because the bylaw says that when you've got a certain amount of spaces, you have to put trees in, and our spaces, most of our spaces are actually inside the building. So again, we can't put trees inside the building, although we have put trees around the building where appropriate. And, and all those waivers, really other than the waiver for the underground parking that I mentioned, all, almost all those other waivers are waivers that have been requested in a lot of other projects, and the board has granted in a lot of other projects.
So many of them, Mr. just, many of them, you summarized our waivers on submission requirements. What do, what do you have to show on a plan?
Yes.
So they're not, they're not the kind of waivers that require a special permit. It's just the judgment of the board as to what we need to see on a plan to be able to evaluate the project.
Yes.
All right. So, Mr. Albert, do you have further questions or comments at this time?
Well, I think I do. In your in your addendum in your letter, you seem to ask for other relief that I guess doesn't really apply. You, you mentioned the issuance of a special permit for a change of a pre-existing use to another pre-existing use. I guess that doesn't apply here.
Yeah, that's, that's, I often, whenever I have a situation where the, where the current situation is non-conforming, I always put that in just in the event that we need to make use of it for something. In this particular case, the, there is a 50-foot setback that would apply from, from an adjacent residential district boundary. Well, I should say, would apply for commercial use. So, and that includes or can include driveways and parking areas. So to the extent that that applies to the existing parking area that is used to support the commercial office building, that situation is non-conforming. The way the bylaw is written and the way it was applied for the project next door, that 50-foot requirement doesn't apply to residential use. So therefore, it technically doesn't come into play, but as always, in an abundance of caution, I'd rather include the relief and, and because if we don't include it in the request, if we get to this stage and we find that we do need it, then we're out of luck and we can't go back or not without re-advertising. So I always include it, but technically we don't really need that for this, for this project.
And isn't the building, even if it did apply to the building, isn't the building more than 50 feet from the residential B property line? It looked like it to me.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just pull up again the, the site plan. And so, so, so there's really, there's, this is the clear district boundary here or the 50-foot. This is a definite district boundary along here. And you can see the 50-foot line drawn in in red.
Right.
And, and as a side note, I mean, you can see that it literally goes right through this project. And in fact, that was, that was an issue that came up on that project, and we had to research that issue. And we actually had some discussion at the hearings on that about that issue that it doesn't apply to residential. So you can see, obviously, this building is far away from that.
Right.
However, the other side of the, the MBTA railroad right-of-way is SRB, so it's a question of whether the line is on that side or whether the line is on this side. And if the line is on this side, this setback right here is 30 feet, and the 50-foot line would be in here. So this corner of the building would be in that 50-foot area.
And the, and the MBTA right-of-way is kind of not in either district?
Well, I, I have to say, I mean, looking at the zoning map over the years, right, I, it's, it's never been entirely clear to me how to treat that, you know?
I'm comfortable with it anyway, George. Thank you. Can you explain for me the waiver on the landscaping? Is that just a question of what's shown on the plan? Or are there certain landscaping requirements that we have that you're asking us to waive?
So, so specifically the landscaping requirements, and it only relates, it's really the landscaping that relates to parking, because as you know, the parking requirements in the bylaw have their own kind of landscaping requirements. And in particular, the bylaw requires that 10% of a parking area shall be maintained as landscaped area. Well, in this case, if you, you know, really most of our parking area is under the building. So if you say 10% of our parking area has to be landscaped, how can we do that inside the building? So we technically have to do it outside, which, which doesn't really make much sense, given there's only, you know, five spaces in the back and two on the side. So
Is 10% of your outdoor parking landscaped?
It depends on how you interpret that, but I, I'm gonna take the, I mean, we might be able to stretch it, but what do you consider landscaped in the parking area? So, you know, see, this is, this is, this is part of the issue. In large parking lots where you have sort of center islands and things like that, you know, you have clearly landscaping in the parking area. In this case, where we have landscaping along one side, is that, all that landscaping account? And if it does, I mean, you know, we may meet that requirement, but but I, I took the safer route just to ask for the waiver, given the fact that really our, our parking area is inside the building. Similarly, the other landscaping requirement is the trees, and it, and it requires basically planting beds for trees four feet wide, which our beds are actually, do meet that requirement. But it also requires for two trees within or around the parking area. So again, you know, we've got trees sort of in the vicinity, but do they count as within the parking area? I'm not sure, because I've never actually been clear on how to interpret that for a situation like this. Again, obviously, like a big parking lot where you have landscaped islands in the middle are clearly within, you know, within, but in this, this situation, this is almost like buffer landscaping. So is that considered parking landscaping or is it buffer landscaping or both?
Mr. Albert, I'll, I'll return to you because you may have other questions. And I don't mean to cut you off, but I'd like to seek clarification from our planning director. No, I understand that an answer to this question might not be right on the top of her head. But two questions occurred to me based on this exchange. Do you know, Lee Newman, whether the area within the railroad right-of-way is zoned or is unzoned?
I am, I am, I am not sure of the answer to that question. I would have to get back to you on it.
I am, I am, I am not sure of the answer to that question. I would have to get back to you on it.
Okay. And then the other question is, I'm surprised to hear a request for waiver of. A certain parking requirements for parking that is underground. I don't think we've ever. Thought that these. Parking requirements applied when parking is underground. Is there any guidance in our zoning bylaw on that issue?
We have not applied those standards to parking that's located within a building in the case of the Oak Street. Mixed-use project that we recently did off of in the Chestnut Street corridor. We did not address, we did not treat the parking inside the building is not, as, as needing to meet landscape standards. We just treated the parking that was exterior as, as falling within the umbrella of the landscaping requirements for the parking lots. And the calculations were all done on the basis of what was exterior to the building.
Yes, that's what I thought. So.
So some of these waivers that are being requested for, as it relates to the interior are not necessary. And we would not need to grant them in the decision that we issue.
And then with regard to the request for a waiver, not exactly a waiver, that's not what's being sought here. Mr. Jenta is saying that because the existing building is, is non-conforming. With respect to the 50-foot setback. Therefore, he's relying on it's a replacement of a prior non-conforming structure. But as I look at the location of the existing building, it does not. It's not within 50 feet of the railroad right of way. So how can you rely on, on that? And, and in, and in what way is the existing building non, non-conforming? Isn't it conforming?
Well, I, I think the issue here really is that once the existing building is knocked down. Whether it was conforming or non-conforming is irrelevant. What is proposed in front of you for new construction is to conform with the rules. This is not an existing building that's being maintained and altered so that you're altering a pre-existing non-conforming structure. This is a situation where you're wiping the slate clean. And when you wipe the slate clean, then what you put up needs to conform with the rules.
Yes, exactly. And if, i- indeed, if, if there were any kind of. Decision to be made with regard of, of a non-conforming structure, maybe. The way our bylaw is written, it is up to the planning board if we're having a site plan approval. But ordinarily such a decision is made by the zoning board of appeals. But I know in the, I know, I'm thinking of some cases where we have. Made decisions based on a prior structure or use being non-conforming. So.
If it's being maintained and you're altering it or changing it. But this case, we are demolishing everything on the property. We're starting with raw land. And, and constructing a new, and in that, there is no, you don't get any protection off of what was there pre-existing non-conforming.
So, all right, so that leads us in the direction of, of saying that we have to consider. Whether 50-foot setback is, is required from the building to the. Property line at the MBTA right of way.
Well, and George is correct. I mean, the issue did come up at the residential development adjacent to this earlier. And that was determined, I think, that the 50-foot setback related to a commercial use and not a residential use.
Well, I, all right, we can look into that further. As I read the bylaw, I did not think that was the case, but if research has been done in the past. That enlighten, that will enlighten us on that. But we can look forward to, to considering that further. All right. I have other questions, but I'm going to let them go and go back to Mr. Albert.
Well, do you, do you want to go with your other questions first, Jean, or shall I continue?
No, you continue.
Thank you. So I just pulled out my copy of the zoning map and looking at the zoning map. It looks to me like the right of way is in the residential B zone. So that, so I raised the question for the planning director as to whether that is something. That if we do have a problem with it. Even, even, even though it's residential instead of commercial. But, but it sounds like George has a good argument that, you know, it wa- it was determined. With the project next door that it doesn't apply to residential. So that's fine. I've got no problem with it. And so I question is, is, if it applies, is it something that we can waive?
If it applies, you can't waive it.
We cannot waive it.
Yeah. Excuse me, I'm, I'm just grabbing, wanting to have my zoning bylaw near me. I'll be back instantly.
So, George. Two other issues and I'm going to go with the one that will probably generate less discussion first. On the request for the lighting waiver in the, in the underground area. Don't you need better lighting for safety reasons at night? Because you've got, you've got basically indoor parking and then people have to get from their cars. And it sounds like it's not totally underground indoor parking. It sounds like it, it, it's kind of exposed to the. To the street level. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about the safety of the people going from their cars to get into the building parking. Parking garages can be problematic from a safety point of view.
All right, let me, let me pull up the site plan again, just to clarify. All right, so these five spots here are, these are external, these are outside and there would be low-level lighting. So, so basically our, the, the request for the waiver is not that there be no lighting. But, you know, that we don't have to do a full, when lighting has come up in other site plan projects, typically. There's been a requirement to submit a photo, a photo. Photometric plan to show all the lighting and the lighting impact and all that. Because the lighting is such a low level and I should say, a, a part of that is because of a concern with respect to impact on. Usually when it's commercial and the impact of the bright commercial lighting on adjacent residential. In this case, because it's low-level sort of accent lighting, path lighting, you know, residential lighting. We know, we're asking for a waiver of that because we don't feel that it warrants having to do a full photometric evaluation or photometric plan and all that. So, but these spaces outside obviously will have some lighting and I'll actually in a minute defer to Kent Duckham, the project architect, to maybe address that. Then when you come into the building, the 16 spaces are entirely within the building. They're, they're basement. Underground parking entirely within the building. So obviously there'll be lighting inside the building for that. But again, the, the, the point in the bylaw of lighting is more for an evaluation of impacts on adjacent properties. And, you know, they could be as bright as a thousand suns inside the building in the basement and nobody's ever going to really notice that. Except the people in the basement. So again, that's why we've asked for a waiver on that. Now Kent, can you maybe touch upon the exterior lighting, especially in the area of these five spaces over here and maybe the two spaces up here?
Before he gets to that, my recollection from your letter is that you mentioned that our bylaw requires one, one candle.
One foot candle.
One foot candle and you were requesting a waiver from that to lower illumination?
Yes, yes, that, that.
I just want to make sure that the illumination that will be supplied. Will be adequate to supply enough lighting at night in both areas of parking for safety for the. For the, for those who are using the parking areas. That's all.
Abs- absolutely. And, and I would also point out, you know, this was also a waiver that we, that we asked for on Oak Street. If my recollection served me correctly, and it was the same concept, that it's basically low-level. You know, accent lighting on the, on the building, sort of bollard lighting as opposed to big spotlights that create. The kind of light that you have at a commercial parking area. So, so with that, Kent, do you want to maybe touch on that?
This is Kent Duckham. So George, we sent you a lighting plan yesterday. Sight lighting plan. And that was done by Blair Hines, who's a landscape architect. And there's some photo examples of what we have in mind there. So if you can pull that up, I think that'll.
I don't recall, yeah, I don't recall.
Kent, you have it?
I, I will note that such a lighting plan was not in the packets that were sent to the planning board for review prior to the meeting.
It was, it came up during design review. And so we, we did it this, this last week and, and sent it to George to submit yesterday.
I'm glad you have it. Thank you. Are you showing it on the screen? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm actually not seeing it.
It's page two. So the PDF that came had two pages, the second page, which has the same landscape plan, also has some lighting. Images and some symbols that show the bollard lighting, the. Wall-mounted sc兽s of various sorts in different locations. So I can preface that to say that the lighting is in the. In the parking in the front is illuminated bollards that shine light down on the ground. That makes it easy to illuminate the walkway coming from Honeywell to the front entry. The front entry just has recessed downlights and a small canopy. So shining down on the ground. Is, as you head further back on the property and around down the, down the ramp. Into the lower parking area, there's a series of. Essentially step lights that'll be recessed into the retaining walls that will shine light essentially down, but will illuminate the path. From the parking area to the entry. On the opposite side of the building where there's the, the back entry exit. There's also illuminated bollards that are, Blair, they're, they're about three feet tall, I believe.
Little bit more than, more like 42. And so just to build on what Kent was saying. That if you looked at our landscaping plan and George, maybe you should just pull that up and maybe I could describe that in general while you continue to look for the. The drawing that was sent. You just put the landscape plan, I mean, that could help the board to notice. Okay, so I'm going to just reiterate. What Kent had stated before. So you could, the, the pathway that's to plan, to the top of the plan. Is the pathway that goes into the secondary or entrance into the building. And so we had two different types of pavement to, to, to distinguish between the main walkway. That would come from the five parking spaces at the rear, that would go up a series of, of cast-in-place concrete steps. Each of which would have a surface-mounted light fixture that's on the tread. So it really gives a lot of, of shadowing. On the tread, so they become very legible in terms of walking up or down. Then that whole path that goes from those steps to the, the back door, I'm going to call it. There are a series of bollards that are on the, the fence side or the property line side of that walkway. That would, that would provide illumination all along that walk. Similarly, if you were going from that secondary entrance out to the sidewalk. There's also a series of bollards that follow the stepping stones that go out to the sidewalk. As Kent had mentioned, there are a series of, of wall-mounted recess fixtures that go along the retaining wall. That extends from the handicap ramp that you can see just to the left of the last of those pink trees right in there. And extend all along that wall and wraps around to the garage entrance. And again, as Ken indicated, there's a soffit before you get to the door and that there's recessed lighting in there. So we think that's going to provide an adequate amount of light in that area. Lastly, the handicap ramp, we are proposing, and I'm sorry that we, that you're not able to see this graphic. But that the railing itself would have some bottom-mounted LED fixtures. That would just create a nice little zigzag on the handicap ramp. That would add just a little bit of a touch of, 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 of kind of interest to that front entrance. As well as to highlight the handicap ramp. Again, repeating on what Kent had said earlier. The handicap parking space and visitor parking space or pull-off area for deliveries. That's located to the street side of the main entrance likewise has those bollards that, that. Line the walkway from the steps all the way out to the front sidewalk. The front steps into the main building likewise have the surface-mounted. Step lights and again, the soffit mounted lights over the, the doorways.
All right. And that plan will be submitted to us and made part of the record, correct?
Exactly.
Jean, this plan you already have. This plan is a part of your, your packet or your record.
It is?
It is, yes.
The lighting plan?
You should, well, no, this isn't, this is the landscape plan.
Oh, I know the landscape plan is. I mean, the lighting plan.
Right, right. That, that'll be submitted, right. So, so this does show, you can see the bollards there, though.
The bollards, well, the plan, we built. Added additional lights in working with Duckham Architects to create a more comprehensive. Lighting plan than the original landscape plan just had the bollards at the. Drop-off and handicap parking space for the purpose of really distinguishing between the walkway pavement. And the parking area because we wanted that pavement to be flush rather than having a curb and a little ramp. So we thought it'd be more generous to have that all at the same elevation and to distinguish between parking and walkway by a pavement change.
Okay, and I now have the, I now have the, the lighting, so I can show you that. Courtesy of Dennis.
Do other members of the board want to see this lighting plan now? Or move on, we?
Briefly.
Briefly, yeah.
Can you get rid of the apps in front there so we can see everything? It's coming up.
All right, so you can see here, here's the lighting on the steps. Right, the railway lighting. The bollards and the soffit lighting.
Excuse me, what is, what is the soffit?
There are small over, so at the front and rear doors, there's a canopy.
Oh, got it, yes.
That covers the entry. So the lights are in the canopy shining down. And then above the garage door in the back, there's a, there's an overhang that creates a little soffit that allows us to put four recessed lights. Washing down the face of the garage doors.
And where are the, where are the 42-inch-high bollards shown and?
You can see them on the lower left-hand corner.
On the lower left-hand corner, okay.
We would go for the higher of those two. The ones that are actually in the picture are the ones that are around 24 inches high. We think they should be, I think it's 42 inches high. Just so they act both to provide better illumination and to be easier to see.
Not unfair.
It's hard to see it.
Yes, somebody was, I can't see the, the people there. Mr., Mr. Block, is that who was asking?
Yes. May I ask a question?
Yes.
With regard to this, to the lighting plan. I, I guess I have a couple of questions. First of all, are all of these lights on at night all the time or are they motion sensor?
That's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. Obviously it could be either.
All the lights are, are essentially lights that shine downward, so they're not casting light out into the neighborhood. And creating glare and particularly at night, you know, shining into other residential areas. So. You know, it's subtle lighting that's washing downward as much as we possibly can and not casting light outward.
And that those bollards are lower than the fence, so it's not as disruptive. I know the Department of Health had concerns about. The light casting into the adjacent properties.
The lights would be below the elevation of the, of the fencing and the light as Ken indicated are cut-off fixtures. So it just sends the light down, you know, in a downward to conjecture.
Would you point out the location of fencing? I don't recall that as being clear from the plans I reviewed. Is it on the landscaping plan or?
It is.
It is on the landscaping plan.
So if you're facing the front of the building and you were on Honeywell Street, the whole left property line has a fence. Typically on fencing, we would step the fencing down at the point you get to the front of the building. So you start to distinguish between front yard and side yard and that fence would go from six feet down to four feet. But the final. But the final, you know, the extent where it goes all the way up to this property line is generally something we like to negotiate with the abutter unless the town has a firm view that it needs to go all the way up the sidewalk.
Okay. But this would be a six foot high, generally along that property line, it would be a six foot high fence, and the lighting you're talking about would be below the height of the fence.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, I will go back and give Mr. Albert an opportunity if he had further questions.
Now, I have one more, one more issue, which George, you may not have heard this one before, in all the years that you and I have been working somewhat together on various, various projects, because this is a new one to me, which is not whether you have too little parking, which is something that is always something that you and your compatriots are in front of us on getting waivers because you can't supply enough parking for our bylaw. But my question is whether you've got too much parking. As you point out in your application and your letter, our bylaw requires one and a half spaces per unit, which is twelve spaces, and you're proposing twenty-three spaces, which is almost three spaces per unit. And I looked at that and I thought, this is, this is an apartment building in in a mixed use area that's very close to a commercial area. It's a fairly high trafficked, well, it's a very high traffic street and a very high traffic, you're near the intersection of Hillside and Hunterwell, which is a very, a very high traffic intersection, and you to, to me, you're encouraging two or more cars per unit being there rather than trying to discourage carbon footprint, trying to discourage more cars, especially where you're so close to the train station, and where you're requesting a waiver on the landscaping, because you're saying it's not quite as much landscaping as you think our bylaw requires. I'm wondering whether, I mean, we're not gonna take, we're not gonna take parking out of the parking garage, that's crazy. But I'm wondering whether you really need those seven spaces outside where if you took out some of that, you could add, you could add landscaping, and I'm wondering whether we should be encouraging so much automobile use at this location. And lastly, I do want to remember our good friend Bruce Eisenhut and ask whether you have space for a bicycle rack somewhere in the, in the parking area.
All right. Well, I have to say, it's the first time I've ever had a planning board member in Needham suggest there's too much parking on a project, so in twenty-five plus years. So
I think that society is moving away from encouraging cars to discouraging cars.
Well, you know, that's a good thing, but I don't think we're quite there yet. And I will say, when we, when we were doing sort of the design and looking at the requirements, technically, the bylaw does in fact require one and a half spaces per unit. But generally, when these type of projects have come up, whether it be before the planning board or even projects before the Board of Appeals, the standard that gets applied is very often two spaces per unit, because the reality is that many, many, many families have two cars. Now, this, you know, one of the things I will point out, Paul, is, you know, these are two bedroom units, so these are not likely to have large families, you know, you're not likely to have lots and lots of cars. So, you know, we're not anticipating an abundance of cars like that, but just from a sort of a planning perspective, both in terms of the, what I have perceived as sort of an informal policy from both this board and the other board in town, is that really you have to expect two cars per unit for your residence, which of course, in this case, that's sixteen spaces. And then you have to have several guest spaces, especially, and this is where actually I agree with you, that Honeywell Street is a, it's a very busy street, and because of the embankment that goes the bridge over the railroad tracks, you know, you have an issue where there is no parking on Honeywell Street, and people that might attempt to park on Honeywell Street would likely cause a real traffic issue. So, you know, this is a project where it makes, I think it makes sense to have, you know, maybe one or two extra spaces, because you don't want a situation where somebody goes and they have a hard time finding a parking space because, because everybody's home and the guest spots are full. So now where do they park? And they try and park on Honeywell Street or on the curb or something like that. So from that perspective, it's, if anything, I think on this project, it's better to have extra spaces so as to head off issues of parking and traffic and so on. But that said, you know, sixteen plus some number of guest spots, you know, typically, I would think for a building of sixteen, you want at least four to six guest spots. That's twenty twenty-one, so maybe you could say we're two spots over. You know, and I think probably if the board wanted us to, you know, reduce by two spaces, I I will defer to the applicant themselves, but I don't think that would be a big problem. And certainly, we could maybe take two spaces and, you know, put a bicycle rack in its place, although I'm not sure that there's really, I think that might be something that looks like, that becomes basically an art installation, because I'm not sure how much use it would actually get.
And George, could I add also a couple of other things? So the, the, the property right next door is really just a big parking lot. So we wanted to discourage guests from parking in the neighbors' parking area by making sure that we had adequate parking. And two, the parking in three points. So the next point is, you really only see two parking spaces for the entire property from most vantage points, you know, from the public vantage point, which would just be the two spaces in the front, one of them being handicap. And three, we needed a place to store snow. And so the spaces in the back, likely on a snow event like we're gonna have here in the next day or two, might, might be filled with snow for periods of time and not even necessarily used for parking. There's no place else really to put snow. And I, you know, I don't know what the neighboring parking lot does with their snow. So we were mindful of that as we developed that scheme.
All right. Oh, are you all set for now?
I think I've taken more than my share. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Why don't I move over to Mr. Jacobs, Martin Jacobs, and I'm just turning my ventilator off here.
I'd like to follow up on Adam's question about the lighting. Will it be on sensors or will it be on all the time at night? If you don't have that answer today, I understand, but if you can get us that answer, I'd like to know that. Secondly, I, can somebody just, George, I suppose, just speak to Tara Gerger's letter to see whether there's any concern that you have with anything in Tara Gerger's December tenth letter to Alex Clay, which I assume you've seen.
Yes. I don't recall there being anything of concern with respect to that.
Okay. And do you have anything, I'm just sort of opening this up, I want to give you an opportunity to respond to the December fourth letter to Lee Newman from three residential abutters at one sixty Hillside Avenue, Betty Vogel, Ruscique Kamani and Annie Atlas. I assume you've seen that letter?
Yes.
If, do you want to respond to those on the record here?
Yep, sure, sure thing. So they, so the three people on that letter, they're in the, that project next door that was, is, was markedly or is markedly similar to this one. They're in the, the sort of the closest of the three buildings to this one. And that, you know, it's interesting, because not only is the area relatively similar between that property and then this one, but that, as I indicated, that was eight units, like this is proposed for eight units. There, the floor ratio on that project was, was same requirement as ours, point seven, and they were point six nine, so we're pretty close. And although, one of the interesting things is the height of their, the buildings next door is thirty-one feet. Now, as I indicated in the beginning, the existing building is somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-three feet. Our proposed building is, is really twenty-seven feet. That's, you know, sort of at grade along the side, so it's not a big increase. And it is actually six feet, I'm sorry, it's actually eight feet lower than the thirty-five foot maximum height allowed in the district. And it's, and it's also, you know, four and somewhat feet lower than the adjacent building. So, you know, I know one of the comments really, there are a couple of comments, but it seemed that the ones that were sort of, to me, more significant were concerns about the height and the shading. So, so, you know, the first response is, our building is, is in keeping with the building that is on the property now. It's well below the threshold allowable in the district. It's below the height of the adjacent building. And most importantly, when this issue came up, we actually did a shading study. And I'm actually going to pull that up now and show you that. Because that is, you know, that is very illustrative of the fact that it's not so much of an issue.
Mr. Jentzer, again, just as with the lighting study, I would like to see that this is formally submitted as part of the record of this hearing.
Yes, we'll, we'll provide this as well. So, so here you can see, this is the existing building here, right? This is existing conditions, and this shows the path of the sun on a given day, March nineteenth is the day that was picked. So, so you can see the sun, the shade, right, projected from the building over the course of the day, starts sort of in this direction, and then it shifts this way as the sun rotates around. So at seven o'clock in the morning, the shade reaches to this point here. Now, that's not necessarily that important, but what is of note and is important is you can see the entire side of the adjacent building at one sixty Hillside is in shade at, through the morning hours, basically from seven to eight to nine, all right, to ten. So this is all in shade throughout that time period. You go to the proposal, and you can see the shade's a little bit bigger, but the additional shade is really projected more beyond the building. And this side of the building, the additional shade isn't much more, and not in a material way more than the existing shade now. Again, because the entire side where the windows are on that building is in shade in the morning, it's still in shade under the proposal. And you can see here, you know, out here on Honeywell Street, and then out here too, as the sun makes its, its movement in the sky, that's where you see a bigger effect, really, the change in the shade, basically, the railroad right away and out in the street. So, so we don't really believe that there will be a significant impact to begin with, and then to the extent there is an impact, it's gonna be relatively minor with respect to shading.
Mr. Jentzer, while you have that up on the screen, oh, sorry, I just would like to ask a particular question. You see on the, all right, good, you've got the existing, and I'm looking at that seven AM mark at that corner, and I'm seeing, I'm focused not only on the shade that occurs at the rear of the adjacent building, but on the side of the adjacent building as well, near that seven AM mark. And so if you go to the proposed, not that different, it appears, correct?
Well, that's right. But I also want to point out, so this is the sun here, casting this way, casting the shade. So this side of the building is, is sort of already on the, you know, even if this building weren't here, this side of the building would be blocked from the sunlight by the rest of its own building. Right? Because the sun's on this side, and then these windows are opposite, really, where this sun is.
I was just trying to see whether it's not only the rear, but the side where people might have windows that would find their windows more blocked than they are now. It appears that they wouldn't be more blocked than they are now on the side.
Not, not in any real substantial way. So
Yeah, all right.
You know, so the seven, so it's like right here, so that's probably right about there. So, I mean, there's a very little bit of extra here, but not a lot.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
All right. And that's, you know, I mean, that's what you would expect with, you know, we're going from twenty-two, twenty-three feet up to twenty-seven feet. That's not, that's not an appreciable increase in height.
And Mr. Jacobs, you may have other questions, but your, your question about the correspondence reminds me that usually after the presentation, I read into the record the correspondence that we have, and I neglected to do that. So at this time, let me mention that we have a letter from John Schlittler, our police chief, regarding the particular maple tree that was mentioned, that's at the, if you're entering the parking lot, the parking, you're entering the property on the driveway, it's the maple tree that was supposed to be planted on the right hand side near the corner of the building. And we've been told that that tree will not be part of the plans in response to Chief Schlitter's letter saying that it may interfere with visibility of people entering, people particularly, I suppose, exiting the driveway. But then we have the email from Tara Gerger of the Health Department, dated December tenth, with public health comments. And the comments are pretty routine, except of course, to make sure that sufficient space is provided to accommodate a separate trash dumpster. And
And the separate recycling dumpster.
Landscape plan, is that right? I saw something that indicated that might be where the trash dumpster is going to be. You have provided for that, is that correct?
Yes, and you actually, let me pull up the landscape and lighting.
It's a larger, it can accommodate probably two smaller dumpsters in the back there.
That, that area will be opening, the doors that open, that's where the trash dumpster will be.
You need to reboot your computer, your, your voice is now going.
All right, this happens, so Paul, please take over and continue with Marty's questions or whoever else.
Thank you.
And by the way, George, that plan that you just had up is showing that tree removed.
Marty, do you wish to continue?
I was just wondering whether George has finished his comments on the December fourth letter from the abutters.
Yes.
Number four in that letter works about a section titled Fill of Debris.
Actually, I'll ask either Kent or maybe John Brineer to respond to that.
I believe that's a note that shows existing conditions, not proposed conditions. And maybe John can verify that.
Yeah, what exactly are you referring to? Is that on, on the existing conditions plan?
I saw, I saw it on the proposed plan, but it's, it's in there lightly near the front right hand corner.
I, yeah, I have a double check, but the, the question says, one of the drawings shows a section Fill of Debris. We assume that, well, it was misspelled. We assume that should be debris instead of derby. The question is, what kind of debris will be used for fill? There are environmental concerns. So are there any environmental concerns? Is this an existing condition that isn't gonna change?
No, I think, I think that was referencing, I think there was a drainage structure that they couldn't see any inverts or anything, because it was filled with debris, whether it was leaves or whatnot.
That is correct.
An existing condition, not a proposed condition.
Correct. So that was just referencing that one of the, one of the drainage structures, a catch basin, was, was filled with debris, so they couldn't get, find a true invert within the structure, that's all.
Right. The text actually says Full of Debris.
Full of debris. So what's intended to be done with that particular spot, anything? Full of debris. So, what's intended to be done with that particular spot, anything?
It, it can get, it can get cleaned out, um, so that it functions properly. I, if it's to remain, I, I'm not sure which, which structure that, um, it was referencing.
All right, so is there any concern, or have you studied whether there's any concern with whatever debris is in that area being environmentally of concern?
No, no, there, there's no concern. That happens quite often uh, with drainage structures that aren't maintained. They get filled and clogged up with, with leaks, and uh, you know, whatever happens to, to land inside inside them off the pavement. So, th- there's no environmental concern at all. That's, that's very typical.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Ted, um, if I may, then I'll continue, um, just to sum up the letters that we received. Um, the letter from the Design Review Board dated December seventh was mentioned before, and uh, it, it addresses a number of issues. Um, and um, particularly, we may wish to discuss um, the slope of the driveway and the slope as it enters the garage, and any concerns about that. Then, um, the other. Uh, then we also already discussed the lighting plan. And then the Design Review Board, after raising uh, these issues, concluded by saying the project was improved in total as presented. And that, uh, the Design Review Board has mentioned these comments for the Planning Board's consideration. Um, then we have a letter from um, the Department of Public Works, from Thomas Ryder, Assistant Town Engineer, dated December fourteen, and um, listing all the plans that he reviewed. And again, mentioning the uh, maple near the entrance that should be removed. And then, as is customary, um, in letters of this type, uh, reminding the applicant of the need to comply with the public outreach and education and public participation involvement control measures. Uh, we probably will have a petition on that and, and, and any final decision. Um, then, then, as was mentioned before, the letter uh, from the abutters. Okay, that takes care of those. Um, so I, I guess Mr. Jacobs was uh, asking questions. Uh, do you have any further questions, Marty?
No, I'm also, thank you very much, Jean.
All right. Uh, so, um, let's see now, Adam Block, um, how about any questions or comments you may have?
Not at this time, Adam Chair. I, um, when you're through with our, uh, so I note that there it seems to be three members from uh, the attendees that have their hands up as well, though.
We'll certainly turn to them. Thanks for noting that, um, Adam. Um, and, and, and how about Mr. Owens? Uh, any question or comment, Ted?
No, I have none.
Okay. All right, then, um, I do want to give um, the attendees an opportunity uh, to speak or ask questions or make comments. Um, Alex Cle, uh, were you arranged to um, have the recognized?
Sure, Jean. Um, okay, yeah, there are four hands now. Um, I will just go in order of how people appear. Um, so Todd Glasskin is the first hand I see. I'm going to allow you to talk. You might have to unmute yourself also.
Okay, Mr. Gladz, uh, Glasskin, Todd Glasskin. And please give your address.
You are now muted, so I think you need to unmute yourself.
Um, perhaps we'll move to a, a different uh, person and go back to Mr. Glasskin when he uh, is able to unmute.
All right, I'm gonna go to Evelyn. She's the next person I'm gonna allow to talk. And you're gonna come on, I think, probably muted, so you'll have to unmute yourself.
Okay, this is Evelyn. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, we can, Evelyn. Uh, please say your last name and address.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Evelyn Adlerstein, and the address, I'm gonna butter for two-ten Hillside. And uh, my question is, this may have been answered along the way somewhere, but are these units going to be for condos or rentals? Or has that not been decided?
Um, Mr. Jenta, would you like to uh, respond to that question?
I, I believe that the general intention is for these to be rentals, although that's not cast in stone.
Okay, and the, just the second part.
George, that is incorrect. These are going to be condos.
There you go.
Um, who, who was that speaking, Mr. Cronin? Dennis Cronin?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that's a definite, that they'll be sold as condos. It's not a rental.
One hundred percent definite.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that.
No problem.
All right, and um, so, um, Mr. Glasskin, is he unmuted at this point, or?
I apologize. I apologize, my hand was not meant to be raised.
Oh, it was not meant to be raised. All right, then. Um, Alex, uh, you said there were two other people, is that right?
Yes, I think just one now at this point. Um, I am going to let her say her name, because I don't wanna mispronounce it. Um, Miss P U Z I K O V. I'm going to allow you to talk. You can unmute yourself and say your name.
Hello, my name is Inga. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
And please give your address.
Um, I um, have a unit at two-ten Hillside Avenue. I'm a trustee. I represent a twenty-five unit building, which is directly adjacent to this property.
And do you reside there as well?
Uh, I am a trustee. I do not reside there. I own a unit there.
All right, you, oh, you own a unit, but you do own a unit, okay.
I do reside in Needham, in Needham, however, and uh, very, very close, so.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the reason I wanted to reach out to you and um, urge you to take it very seriously because uh, people in this area are very, very concerned. And um, what's happening in Needham, I'm sure you are aware, is that more and more things being built, and they're being squeezed in the area that it's hard for people to breathe. They're on the top of one another. And unfortunately, people in our building find themselves in a situation where uh, on the top of having a property next to us that's built on basically no land. And there, uh, cars and trucks come to our parking and uh, park and block everybody. Now, we have this one that's directly across from us, and then you have a butters directly on the back. So, it's very squishy. This is suburb. This is not Brighton area where people used to buildings, and it's getting unbearable. It's very, very difficult what's going on in the neighborhood. People concerned, and rightfully so. They do not want everything just to be bathed and buildings to be built. And um, I was looking at that parking lot. It's directly across from our parking lot. And I thought we were talking about two buildings, but we're talking only about one. So, the building kinda left, when they're going to square it away, and it's going to become much bigger, it's gonna be very squishy there. And uh, I agree with Mr. Paul Albert that we are encouraging more traffic with so many parking spaces. If they do sixteen parking spots, why not give eight to the units and other eight to people that are visiting? Here's your visitor spots, but the traffic is uh, very tight over there. It's gonna be tons of cars coming in and out, and uh, there is a bunch of concerns, actually. One is that it's a mixed use. We have twenty thousand square feet. Usually, when it's a ten thousand, you put one single family house, so twenty thousand allows for two. All of a sudden, we have eight units. That's a lot. Uh, parking spaces underneath not taken into consideration, so if you do take them into consideration, this is a crazy square footage we're talking about, and fourteen or twelve thousand square feet for a unit alone. Uh, all the special permits and reviews, uh, they need to be taken into consideration very seriously. Uh, and um, go one after one. People want to know how they can make their voices heard. They wanna know where they can ride or who they can talk to, so I am, the reason, don't kill the messenger, but that's what I need to bring back to them. Um, multifamily zoning, you know, we're going into mixed zoning, that's all of a sudden becomes multifamily, so that triggers a lot of things and a lot of questions right there. Um, lighting, I, I'm sure they're gonna figure this out. Lighting and the shadow, I'm not as concerned as eight units with active two parking spaces each. But nobody mentioned construction here, and we have train that's idling in the back of our building day and night. People are exhausted. It's, it has nothing to do with construction, I understand. But people are exhausted. Half of the building, that, uh, people that live in the building are elderly. They're tired, they're depressed, they have anxiety. Now, at seven o'clock in the morning, for a year ahead, we are going to have a construction being banging on half, full, full day trying to build something, and they're going to work on Saturday, according to my conversation with the builder. So, you can imagine how disruptive it's going to be for those poor folks living over there. Uh, traffic study is very important. We need to understand, I don't know why that's being skipped. Dumpster, I understand they're gonna figure out the dumpster. Uh, fifty feet feedback, very important. Why it's not taken in, into consideration? There is a huge chunk of building that's being built right there. Uh, people just don't want wood to be, to be thrown over their eyes. Please, as a committee, be very careful what you grant and, and take into consideration those poor folks that live in those buildings nearby. We wanna improve the neighborhood, but not at the cost of those people suffering. In, in a COVID situation, everybody's stuck at home. Imagine living through this construction year ahead. That's very, very tough for them. And um, clean slate, yes, it's important. If, if the building is being torn away, clean slate needs to be by the rules. So, it cannot be so many waivers that now we have no green area and uh, just a building built. Couple trees and couple bushes do not make up for it. You understand that very well. So, basically, those are the concerns. Those are the concerns of the people.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Puzikor. Um, I want to uh, make sure I understand where you and uh, also um, um, Ms. Adam Stein live. Um, do you live immediately a butting? If you were looking at the property, do you live to the left, or do you live across um, Honeywell Street?
Building two-ten Hillside, those two parking spaces are exactly across from one another. So, if people from our building would try to leave, and people from this building would try to leave their parking lot at the same uh, time, they would have a collision. Those two cars would go right at one, at one another. And right now, there is basically no cars coming in. But with eight units actively living there and having two parking spots each one, you can imagine that it's sixteen cars going in and out on the top of our cars. And we have so little, you know, there, you know, one of the people mentioned very smart thing, which is uh, snow. We have so many problems. The parking is so tight, there is no place to put a snow. So, cars, they park in between the buildings. It's, it's ridiculous. It's very, very tough situation there. And with squishing something, that's ve- that's gonna be very difficult for peo- people to live in.
Okay, but when you, when you describe uh, your concern about uh, the traffic, uh, it makes me think that y- y- you're coming out of your driveway across the street from this property. That's all I want to figure out. Is that correct?
Do- those two parking spaces are directly across from one another. So, when you coming out from um, four hundred Honeywell Street uh, building to the street where the curb side is now, maybe they're gonna change it, but I doubt it. So, if you coming out to the Honeywell, our building coming out also to the H- Honeywell, and they can bump into one another. They, they directly across. It's very, very close.
And you, and you're across the street, or are you on the same side of the street?
We are um, across, across, our parking space is across. So, there's those eight units, they're on the back of them. We are across from them. So, our building is in an L shape, so all the units that are on the back will be looking at a year construction from their windows and, and uh, smelling the debris from there. Once we open them.
Thank you for, thank you for clarifying that. All right, um, would Ms., excuse me, Mr. Jenta, do you wish to respond at all? Are those, well, first of all, are those, Alex, uh, are those, are there any other uh, attendees who have their hand raised?
There are four more.
Oh, there are four more. Well, I, I want to, uh, I want to hear from uh, every person then. Um, so, uh, go ahead and, well, let me stop, however. Since certain things have been presented, perhaps I should give Mr. Jenta a chance to respond. Then we'll go to the additional attendees. So, uh, Mr. Jenta, do you wish to respond?
Just, just briefly, just briefly, and I think just, Jean, I think to help you understand where uh, where the, the, where the property at two-ten Hillside is, I, I just wanted to show you two things. The first is uh, from the assessor's map. And so here you can see, this is our property here.
Yes.
And, and this is two-ten Hillside here. This is that.
That's what I finally figured out, right?
That, that big apartment building. And then, um, and then let me show you, um, with respect to the, the, sort of the driveway situation. Just courtesy of uh, Google, Google Maps and uh, you know, Live Street View. This is not something we can do in, in actual hearings in person, but, so you can see, this is on Honeywell Street here. This is their building at two-ten, and I think this is the driveway that um, Ms. Puzikov was referencing. And you can actually see, here's the, here's the, the driveway for four hundred uh, here. So, so they are, you know, this one, they're not quite exactly opposite, but they're pretty close, pretty close to being opposite.
All right, thank you. That's, that's helpful to, to know exactly the proximity.
And, and so other than that, I just wanna mention, you know, I mean, I think um, we've already covered some of the things that were raised, but you know, one, one of the things is construction is just a reality of every project, and the, the town does have bylaws that limit the hours as well as uh, noise levels and such, and, you know, uh, the developers do uh, the best they can to kinda limit that, so. Unfortunately, that's a necessary evil with, with uh, construction.
All right, um, so why don't we turn to the other attendees who wish to comment?
Sure, I'm just gonna go um, down the list again. So, the next person is um, Noah Atlas. He, I'm going to allow you to talk, and then you're going to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Noah Atlas, all right, um, Mr. Atlas, uh, what is your address?
Uh, I'm at one sixty Hillside, so one of the abutters closest to the lot line.
Okay.
Unit six, so kind of right in the middle of the, if you're looking at the building on that left side, uh, we're right there. So, I, I just wanna re-clarify, I know we mentioned, uh, they mentioned the height of the fence was gonna be six feet. Um, I'm also curious, uh, that, it looked like there were gonna be some trees and bushes there. How high are those gonna be? And basically, two main concerns from our point of view. Uh, one, the lighting that was already brought up by a, a, a couple of the council members. But probably more importantly, and what hasn't been touched on yet, is our unit and the adjacent units are gonna look right in on each other. I mean, they're like, you know, eight to ten feet apart from each other, and you're gonna be able to see directly into the windows of both units. Um, so I'm curious if the developers thought about that and done anything to mitigate that. Thank you.
Um, why don't we, um, why don't we see what questions the other attendees have? And then, yeah, give Mr. Jenta a chance to respond uh, to all the questions that are posed. Um, is there another uh, person? Alex?
Um, the next person is, let me just disable. Also, I just want to say if. For Inga and Noah, if you don't have any more questions, if you could put your hand down. I can put it down for you, but I just didn't want to assume that you, that it wasn't on purpose. So the next person, thank you for doing that, the next person is going to be. Roshit Komani, apologize for any pronunciation issues, I'm gonna allow you to talk and please unmute yourself.
Okay, Mr. Kamani. Please say your address.
Hi, this is Roshit Kamani and I live in one side, one sixty hillside, I have. Unit seven, this is the. Unit which, which is directly behind four hundred Honeywell. Proposed development.
Yes.
One of the questions I had was regarding the height of the proposed development, I believe the new height is twenty nine feet. And it seems like there's a study. Done which shows there's no significant increase in the sunlight intake. However, I also noticed in the design that there are like chimneys on top of the building, I think there are three or four of them. One seems to be rather big, does that, is that also factored into the, into the study that has been completed?
All right, we'll make sure that that question is answered, I had that question myself. I assume it may be an elevator shaft at the top of the building. But let's just make sure if we have any other question. Is, is there any other person, Alex?
Yes, we have someone named Bet. Or Betty, perhaps, I'm gonna allow you to talk, please unmute yourself.
Hello.
Hello, Bet, will you please give us your last name and your address?
My last name is Vogel, V O G E L. One sixty hillside, unit eight.
All right, so we have representation from perhaps all three of the unit owners.
Yes, a joint venture.
One sixty hillside, all right, go ahead.
We have major concerns. Mr. Mr. Gunter, I must disagree with you concerning the shadow and the light. Every morning, we get full light in our two upstairs bedrooms. And we get full light coming in from the rear into our living room. There is no shadow there. Our concern is, the two concerns, one is the height of the new building. The twenty nine feet plus the fact that there are now going to be patios. And balconies which are going to come out from there. Which means there is less space between our property line and the new building. That's going to create perpetual shadows. For these three units, we will no longer get any sun. In the back, upstairs or downstairs. That is a problem, I don't know if it's possible to move the building forward. Four feet so that we get hopefully some sunshine, some natural light. That would then come in from there. It's, it's going to be a major problem for us. In terms of then our electric and heating bills are going to go up. Along with the obvious use of the fossil fuels because we won't have the natural sunlight that heats. Our units during the day. So if someone could give me some ideas about solutions for this, I would greatly appreciate it.
All right. If I want to, I do want to give Mr. Jenta and the others a chance to respond, but is that, is that it as far as attendees?
Yeah, that's, that's our major concern.
Yes, thank you.
What we would like to do, if possible, is to have someone from the planning board. And someone from the design board come here. And see what the natural light looks like instead of looking at pictures and design. To actually see what kind of light we get and what we won't get. That would, that would be very helpful.
I understand. So. Let's, let me summarize the last three questioners. Mr. Atlas asked about the height of the fence. Which he recall, I guess he wanted to clarify if it was six feet. And whether the trees and bushes that are to be planted along the fence will be higher above the, above the fence. And he has a concern about lighting. And, and also proximity for neighbors to be seeing into one another's windows and whether this, I don't know, suppose some. Design solution you've given some thought to, then. Mr. Hunan. Had the same concern about the height of the building. And the increase in shadow and he asked about projections at the top of the roof. That might even be higher than the twenty nine feet. Or twenty seven feet, depending on how it's measured. And then Ms. Vogel, again, the main concern was the shadow and light every, and. She said they, the buildings that your shadow study show as being in shadow. All morning actually do get light, so I wonder whether the shadow study is considering. The height of the adjacent building so that maybe their first floor is in shadow, but their second floor might be getting light that they would be deprived of. And she again mentioned the twenty nine foot height and she mentioned the patios and balconies coming out. Now, I know they're, they're not coming out on that back side of the building, but they're coming out on the front and. At the front of the building and the rear of the building where the, where the entrance is to the garage. But since they do project out, perhaps they have their own shadows. And she asked, because the basic question, can the building be moved forward on the lot, is that a possibility? So perhaps a response to those concerns and questions.
Gene, this is Alex. There, there is still one person who has their hand up, who hasn't spoken yet, I, I don't know, did you want to take a break from that? Or should, did you want to continue?
We may as well hear from the, if this seems to be the last person.
There's one person who hasn't spoken, then there's one person with their hand up who has already spoken, so I can leave that up to you.
With the, the hand up has already spoken?
There are two hands up, one person has and one person hasn't.
All right, let the person who has not yet spoken have an opportunity to speak. And identify themselves by name and address.
Okay, Mark Lane, I'm gonna let you speak, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Lane, what is your address?
Okay, I live at three twelve Webster Street. I am the property manager for this property, I've managed it for about six years. We had our annual meeting last Thursday and this was a big topic of discussion. I think a lot of things have been answered, but I would say that. I mean, the height thing, I don't, I don't know if you can do anything about it, it would go a long way, particularly with those three, three people that just spoke. But for me as a manager, and I mentioned it to him last week. The fencing, the lighting, the dumpster. In the landscaping, those are really important, if that gets done nicely. It's gonna have much less impact on our community. So I think we need to have more details on. Just saying the landscape is lush or it's plentiful or whatever, there needs to be more detail involved. I personally would rather not see the dumpsters outside. It would give you more area to pull your snow, if it's possible to just do toders and do them inside the building. That would be ideal, we manage a lot of properties around. If we can do toders inside, we do it, because people don't like seeing ugly dumpsters. And people misuse them, they pile stuff outside and it looks messy real quick. So that's one thing I would ask you to review if that's possible.
Okay, Mr. Lane, which property is it you manage, is it the one immediately adjacent?
Everybody's been speaking, Hillside Ave condos.
Okay, Hillside Ave condos.
Sixty.
One fifty four to one sixty, okay, thank you.
That's it.
Okay, so, so it, Mr. Lane's question was wanting to make sure he has the detail on the lighting. The fence and the landscaping and he suggests. That the dumpster be inside the building rather than outside. And for the reasons he stated, all right.
I just ask Mr. Lane if he's had an opportunity to review the landscape plan that we've seen?
Oh, I disabled him. I can re-enable him. Okay, you should be able to unmute yourself again, Mr. Lane.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
The first time I saw it was tonight, but when we. When we had the meeting last week, I mean, to me, it would be, I would like to see some fairly significant. Shrubs or trees on the backside to lessen the, the impact of the building. I mean, there, there's some good parts of what's being proposed here, I mean. To me, you're not gonna have a sea of asphalt, you're gonna have a much more modern building. You know, I think there are definitely some, some good points, you're gonna have a lot less exterior parking. I, I do know though, if I lived in one of the units where the three people just spoke, Betty, Sheet and Noah. I mean, it really impacts those most, you know, so if, if something can be done. Height wise or positioning wise, I think that would gain a lot of confidence on the rest of our community there.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Lane, and let's turn to the proponent. To address the questions that have been put by the.
Gene, I'm sorry, this is Alex again. Inga has her hand up, I do know she spoke, Evelyn has her hand up, I cannot remember if she spoke or not. Do you remember?
Evelyn did, did speak, I like to, I really. Evelyn was the first speaker, in fact, and I will give, I will give those individuals another opportunity. But I do think it would be good to give the proponents. An opportunity because some of the questions that these people may have in the way of follow-up may actually be addressed. In, in the proponents' answers and then we'll turn to them again. All right, Mr. Jenta, would you like to lead the team and any response that you think you wish to make to these questions?
Sure, all right. So let me, let me first start with, I think, the height. And I know, you know, it's been mentioned about twenty nine feet and I just want to clarify. The calculation, the technical calculation results in a stated height of twenty nine feet. But that takes into account the, the lower level. The height basically from the grade at the garage door going into the basement. So that's not the actual height of the building if you're looking at it really from three sides. It's just the average when you take into account that the backside as well. If you, when you're actually looking at the building from the front, the left side or the right side, the building height is actually twenty seven feet. Which is really only about five feet, you know, between four and five feet higher than the existing building. So, you know, so again, with respect to height, we've tried to keep it. You know, lower than you might otherwise have and certainly lower than sort of a lot of conventional designs. And it's not as high as it, as it would appear based on the calculation on the plan of twenty nine feet. Along with that, I would ask maybe, maybe for Kent or his team to chime in on the, on the shade study. But one comment I'll make on the, with respect to the projections sort of above. And I think, you know, looking at the plans, the only one I note is the elevator shaft, which is actually smack in the middle of the building. So even if you add some additional shading. For that, I think you're, you know, that's not gonna come into, come into any realistic play. Because any additional shading from that's gonna probably be within the roof span, not beyond the roof span. So, so Kent, can you or your team maybe address the shading a little bit?
Sure, this is Kent. So the shade study did show those, the undulating facade and, and the elements that go above the roof line. So if you want to go back to the shade study, you can see how that's. Affects the neighbors.
Are you, are you putting it up on the screen, is that what you're doing?
I am, yeah, I just needed to.
While, while he's doing that, I can continue, so. Our building is eight feet off the property line, which is at the same line as the original building. And I believe the, the adjacent buildings are at least eight feet off the property line, so the distance between the two is more like sixteen. Plus feet from one another. The original building was offices, the new building is residential, so there'll be residential units looking at residential units. Similar to the rest of the, the, the eight units on the adjacent lot. You know, the proximity of those buildings is gonna be similar as this building.
Would you respond to the comment that the upstairs. Rooms in the adjacent building do get morning light. Which your shade study appears as though the entire building is always in shade in the rear.
So the shade study is, is from an app, it's. It's not something that we make up, we, we enter the data and the shade study is made for us from the app. And anyone could, could use the same shade study. What it doesn't take into account really is the height of the adjacent building, so what you're seeing is the shadows at the ground level.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Both of the shade studies. So existing conditions and then proposed conditions shows more of an undulating shadow line which represents the. The parts that go above the roof line and, and the ins and outs, there's subtle ins and outs, there are only one foot bays and. Three foot elements that go above the roof line. In order to break up the facade and give it some, some visual interest. So that, that is represented on that shade study. The height, the height as relates to the butters is twenty seven feet right there, so they, they will only feel the twenty seven foot height. The twenty nine is based on an average grade that, that takes into account the cutout for the, for the garage door in the back. The balconies project toward Honeywell Street and toward the back of the property, they. They're gonna be very transparent glass and steel. So they're not gonna, they're not gonna cast any kind of shade or anything like that, they'll be, they'll be glass. We can't really move the building forward because we have a twenty foot setback limit. So we have to stay where we're at. Now, we can move it back a little bit, but I think that would, would not help.
I think if I could clarify, I think the question was whether you could build, move the building away from that side lot line. Away from that fence that you're speaking of. A certain number of feet.
So this, this shape, the configuration of the building really is based on. An adequate parking garage so that the parking and the driveways. And, and all the elements in the, in the basement. Part of the building are functional and meet, meet the requirements. For driveway width and parking dimensions and so on. So we really can't squeeze the building and make it narrower. Down the middle, front to back. And in so being, we can't really move it closer to the entry driveway because. We barely have enough room over there for. For entrance into the building and the handicap ramp and the, and the walkway, if you look at the plan, you can see how everything is. Is tightly woven together there. We put the, the left-hand side of the building exactly where the original building was. And we thought that that would be adequate. Back to fencing and bushes and tree heights and just the, and lighting. The quality of the landscape as relates to the neighbors, I think if you look at the site plan and it's. the quality of the landscape as relates to the neighbors. I think if you look at the site plan and if you look at the lighting plan, you'll see a, a very lush plan and, and actually around the perimeter of that site plan, maybe George can put it up, or photographs, examples of the plantings that are intended there, and it's a very decorative planting scheme, both for trees and shrubs. Everything is indicated on that plan by species name and common name and sizes. And the bottom right-hand corner of the plan shows all the material that's intended.
It does, it does it on the bottom right-hand, it shows the height of the various plantings, I see.
Some of it shows height and smaller elements just show the, the size of the container that they come in, which is very common.
So.
No questions? You know, Blair Heinz, the landscape architect can.
I can speak.
Um, I, I.
Pardon me.
Mr.
Back out, you can see, you can see examples of what those trees and bushes actually look like. You can see around the edges, some very decorative, there's the fencing, samples of the fencing, and, and decorative trees.
Okay, so perhaps the Butters will have more of an opportunity to review these plans. And it seems likely that we're going to continue this hearing and, and give them that opportunity. And it's very often persons proposing a project will take, take an opportunity to meet with the Butters and Mr. Lane, the property manager identified himself and gave his address, and if such a meeting is desired, perhaps it could be arranged so that people fully understand the plans. So if that takes care of the response for now, the persons who had their hands raised, but are they okay for now, or do wish to speak again? Alex, if you could see if they have their hands raised?
Yeah, so there are three hands raised. Two of them you've heard from before, and one of them is new.
All right. I must say that we have two other hearings on our agenda for tonight. And so at some point, we really will have to continue this hearing. We want to get all the issues out. If, if the persons asking the questions feel that they're asking, they're asking questions that haven't been asked before, or raising issues that haven't been discussed before, please go ahead, but if you're saying the same thing over again, I, we, at some point, we really have to move on. So Alex, is there anybody who still has their hand raised with a new issue or question?
The hands are all still raised.
Okay, well, go ahead and recognize people and I think, you know, I don't know, I, I'm sure the members of the board have further questions and comments, but I think we're going to, we're coming to a point where we're going to have to continue the hearing. Do you agree, Lee Newman, that we should do that at this point?
Yes, I mean, I think, I think there's enough of this been raised here that we, we should continue the hearing.
Yes. All right. Let's give these people an opportunity to say what they have to say, and then I think we'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing. But go ahead, please. Who is first?
Rhonda Altman, I don't believe has spoken yet, so I'll do her first.
Oh, yes, Rhonda Altman.
I'm, yes, I'm Rhonda Altman. I live at 156 Hillside Unit 4, so I'm in the same complex as the 160, but I'm not right against the fence line.
Okay.
My question is, one of the things we didn't see today is any idea of sort of water flow. I don't know the right term for that kind of study, but is the ground level being raised at all that would affect the runoff water coming towards us in a way that would also, you know, impact us flooding or other such ways? Because, you know, we're not talking about a lot of, there's not a lot of grass, right, per around the buildings, and, and so I'm just wondering if a study has been done.
Yes, I'm sure the proponents will respond to that. That there is a utility plan that shows. Now, was there a drainage? Was there a drainage study?
There was a stormwater report, but George can speak to that.
Yes, yes, okay, please, George Jenta on the, on the drainage.
Yes, gee, we, we did do a stormwater analysis that was submitted with the application early on, so that has gone through the review process with engineering. And of course, one of the cornerstone requirements for any project as a part of that drainage analysis is that it does not materially change or increase water flow off property. And in fact, quite typically with new construction, new development, you end up improving drainage and water situations because you wind up taking water that is currently flowing wherever, and you're putting it into infiltration systems and then adding it, and then putting it into the, the drain, the town drain system as an overflow. So you're taking water that right now maybe is running, you know, in this case, over the, the parking lot onto adjacent properties or onto the street. That water is now going to be collected in catch basins, put into pipes and basically first infiltrated into the ground, and then when it gets too much, then it winds up going into a pipe that goes into the, the town drain system. So, so again, that, that's all been submitted and reviewed by engineering, and I'm sure if they had a concern or an issue with it, they would have said so in their letter that you read earlier on in the hearing.
Yes, I, I, I didn't make a printout of that report, so I don't have it right in front of me. I mean, the Grenier Stormwater Management Report, but I do see, and I do want to let Ms. Altman know that that report was reviewed by the town engineer and the letter that I referred to earlier dated December 14th indicates that there were no, that the, the town engineer found, he didn't expressly say that he found the report satisfactory, but it's implied by the fact that he made no comment, no adverse comment with regard to the stormwater management report. And we rely very much on the advice of our town engineer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And are there, and thank you for your, for your question, and, and you'll see if you look at the plans, the, the drainage structures that are proposed to take care of the drainage for the property. And Alex, there are still other people who want to speak?
There are. Who's spoken before? Adam seems to have his hand up.
Our Adam, yes.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue this hearing. We still have two other hearings. We were allotted 20 minutes for this hearing, 20 minutes for each of these hearings. And we still have to get to, to other hearings plus other business for the evening. If I can, I'd like to make a mo.
And Mr. Block, we cannot hear you at this point, but I understand you're making a motion to continue the hearing. And we need that motion to include a date of the continuance.
I would suggest the next meeting, which would be on January the 4th at 7:30.
Great. Mr. Block, are you able to speak now so we can hear you?
I, I've been.
You're good now. Okay, so.
Yes, I'm not sure what else we have on the agenda for that night if there are any other public hearings, but.
Well, we don't have any other public hearings scheduled for that night. We just have an anticipated decision that we're going to issue on at, on Children's Hospital, which will be the first thing on the agenda at 7:15.
Okay, great. So I move to continue the hearing until that date. And I kindly request that those participants that have their hands up and invite them to provide their comments, you know, I suppose, to, I think, you, to Lee, so that we can certainly review their questions and, and give comment and feedback and circulate their questions around to the rest of the stakeholders.
Yes, so that we have a motion to continue the hearing to January 4th at 7:30, and an encouragement of those who have further questions or comments to submit them in writing. And certainly, you can attend the continued hearing and be recognized to ask your questions or give your comments orally.
I'll second the motion.
So I second the motion, so I will ask for a roll call vote on that motion to continue the hearing. Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Owens? Mr. Alpert?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
And the chair is I. So this hearing is continued to January 4th at 7:30 PM.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. So the, the next, let me just set aside this, these papers and have before me the agenda and the list of participants so I can recognize them.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask just for a three-minute break? I'm on this next hearing as well.
Oh, yes, all right. A three-minute, shall we take a three-minute break? Or, I mean, we could deal with something else on our agenda, but would others like a break?
I could use a break through.
All right, so we will convene again at 9:40.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, you, it's good to see you. It's been a while. You're muted.
Sorry, but that's good to see you as well. How you been?
I've been well. I've been well. How's your family?
The family is doing great. Everybody healthy on you guys' end?
Yep, we're just striving to stay COVID-free, working hard at it.
It is a, a juggling match, isn't it?
It is, it is.
She's good. My kid's school just decided they're going full remote again till, end, till Christmas. Give them an opportunity. It's only four days.
Yeah.
Give them another opportunity to kind of shake it off, whatever's going through everything right now.
Yeah, see, see what happens in January. I was looking this morning, because I, I work in downtown Boston, and I do go into the office three days a week. But I was looking at Mayor Walsh's new, new step-back restrictions. I mean, he's basically closing a lot of things that had just reopened fairly recently.
It's, it's, I will say, it's really tough on some people, really bad. You know, my daughter with the Special Ed Department, those kids really struggle with distance learning. I personally have a neighbor who has some issues that I know this has been very difficult on them, aside from, so just hoping that our neighbors and friends can all, you know, aside from obviously not getting COVID and getting sick, obviously, but on top of that, all the other side stuff that makes this a double challenge.
With the vaccines, it looks like they may even be the odd of this, in 2021, I was originally saying it would go into 2022, but maybe by, maybe by this time next year, we'll be fairly close to normal.
Yeah, one would think. It looks like these, these guys have been ramping up pretty, pretty, pretty hot and heavy, so I, I got to imagine there's going to be a, a boatload of doses available for particularly those people who need it really bad. So we'll see, hopefully, you know, one foot in front of the other. Yeah, we've.
It is 9:40, but I, I see that some of our members aren't yet back on the screen, so we'll wait another minute, another couple of minutes.
Well, George is back. That's the important thing.
That is.
No trick without punch. As they say in Scotland.
You've got a busy night, George.
I do.
All right, Marty Jacobs is back. I just want to make sure that we have.
No, Adam and Ted.
Ted and Adam and Leslie Newman and Alex.
There's Lee. Welcome back, Lee.
Okay, we're just waiting for Ted and Adam to rejoin us.
Um, Jean, I got a text from Ted that he has to leave.
Oh, okay. I know this meeting has gone on a while, yeah.
It's been a long hearing.
Yeah, I kind of anticipated that it would be, you know. Well, so that, but we, we certainly want Adam to be on with us.
Madam Chair, if I can, I can ask Lee, with Ted leaving, has Ted missed any meetings on the 390 project? I'm just mindful of the, the requirement that you can only miss one meeting.
I don't, this thing has been continued, George, so many times, so many different.
For like a year, George. How are we supposed to know that?
I just don't have off the top of my head. I don't have the answer to that question.
I don't, Ted really rarely does miss a meeting, George, so if I had to guess, I would say no, but we, we wouldn't be able to promise that.
All right.
So it looks like we have the team here and we have a quorum back. Marty Jacobs is here. I'm just recognizing you all. Paul Alpert is here, and Adam Block is here, and I'm here. So now I'll recognize the team for the property at 390 Grove Street. The, speaking for the project property owner is Morris Schmidt. Are you here, Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, I've got the mute figured out. I'm here.
Okay, and the project attorney, George Jenta?
Here.
Is here, and the project surveyor, Paul Bellus?
Here.
Yes, and the project engineer, David Kelly, yes. And, all right, that is the team for this project. So we're at the, this is, this, this is a continued hearing. And we had submitted to us revised plans, a stormwater analysis and calculation report. I'm just looking to see if we have any communication as well. We have, we have letters. One dated November, November 23rd, and the other dated December 8th from attorneys at Bernkoff Goodman, who are representing the Butters. I'm not going to, you know, quote anything from these others. I just want to make sure I have them, have them all identified. We also have a letter from Thomas Ryder, our town engineer, and also a report done for attorney Robert Stetson at Bernkoff Goodman by Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc. So that engineering review was by an engineer engaged by the, by the Butters. So recognizing Mr. Jenta or whoever else from the team, he wishes to have speak at this point to perhaps to go over the changes in the plan or whatever you think needs to be brought to our attention at this continuance. be brought to our attention at this continued hearing.
Sure thing. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, in this long continuing saga, that is the two-lot subdivision of 390 Grove, let me just share my screen and show you the plan, so I can point out a couple of the broad-brush changes, the more significant kind of changes. And we'll start right off the bat. So, just to refresh your recollection on this, the plan set included a by-right or as-of-right plan to establish how many lots could be created with a, you know, a conforming or neater conforming subdivision, and then the lotting plan that shows our proposed development. So, on the by-right plan, we have changed the roadway a bit. So we've put in this little, little curve here, or the roadway. And by putting in this curve, on the original plan, there was no rounding on the side. There is now a conforming rounding on this side, so it more closely conforms with the subdivision rules and regulations. Parcel A here, we have expanded that so that basically on both the by-right, and you'll see in a minute on the lotting plan, is large enough to include the projected stormwater infiltration system, so that is entirely in, within parcel A. So, and then, not so much on the by-right plan, but we also conducted an additional soil test to determine soil types in this area here, and these were all things that had come up during prior hearings. Now, I'm going to go down to our lotting plan, and you can see on our lotting plan that as with the by-right or as-of-right, we're keeping that same curve coming in, so that we keep a 20-foot radius rounding at Grove Street in compliance. So that's one, actually, one waiver that we no longer require. And then parcel A, the non-buildable parcel, is the same as, or essentially the same as it was on the by-right plan. Those are sort of the big changes, but now I'm going to ask David Kelly to sort of address quickly some of the other sort of minor, more technical changes.
Sure, if you want to scroll down to the next sheet. So, on this sheet, this is the proposed plan. As you can see, the infiltration system, the larger one, is now completely located within parcel A. It is no longer shared between parcel A and Lot 1. We conducted some soil test pit in the location of the infiltration system to get the accurate elevation of groundwater. We obtained that, and then we redesigned that system accordingly. We regraded the road to allow for the, for the little curve that was talked about prior, and the geometrical configuration of the cul-de-sac was modified slightly based on the new lot configurations. And summary, that's really the holistic changes that were made, and then, on the next sheet, on the profile, the grading updates were pretty much done accordingly, and all the utilities were relabeled and modified.
Okay, so, and I think there were a couple other minor clarifications as well. I think David, right, on the, there were a few items that were added to the plan or clarified on the plan, notes and whatnot.
Correct.
Yep, okay. So, so, so as you can see, I mean, not a whole lot changed. Probably the most significant change really was doing the test, the soil testing here to establish the groundwater level in the vicinity of the infiltration. So, you know, so basically, the proposal is, is really the same as it has been for this two-lot subdivision with, instead of a roadway, essentially a driveway or as close to a driveway as we can get to serve the house and back, because it doesn't make sense to have a full-blown, you know, road going all the way up just to serve one house. So, so at this point, I'd like to just address, you know, the board has received some correspondence from the neighbors, or on behalf of the neighbors, and I would just like to address some of the, some of those issues, some of the more minor points we actually agree with, but when it comes to the substantive ones, as you might expect, we are in disagreement. So first and foremost, probably the biggest issue, at least from my perspective, that the neighbors seem to have raised, is this question about whether or not that parcel A in the front can be created. Now, they claim that it's, that it's basically, that you can't do it, but yet, they have not pointed to any single provision in the zoning bylaw, subdivision rules and regulations, zoning act, subdivision control law, or even applicable case law in Massachusetts, that says that you can't do it, or even leads to a reasonable inference that you can't do it. Instead, as set forth in one of the letters that was submitted, they actually engage in what I would consider a tortuous, a net legal analysis that cites cases from outside, well outside Massachusetts, including one case from Louisiana, which is, of course, their law is fundamentally different from ours, as it's based in part on the Napoleonic Civil Code. In any event, those cases are irrelevant, really, in this state or this Commonwealth. But they basically do this tortuous kind of analysis to try and say that you can't ever have a non-buildable parcel. But, the reality is that there is nothing at all in the law, at all, at any point in law, that says that you cannot create a non-buildable parcel as a part of a subdivision, and in fact, it's well-settled law that you can create non-buildable parcels as a part of a subdivision. Now, they're, really, their focus is, is primarily that, in creating this non-buildable parcel, we are avoiding the application of the minimum required lot width requirement of the bylaw that's set forth at Section 4.15. And, as a part of that, they make an argument that we have, that you can't do this, and we have to have frontage on the street. However, the board, both recently and historically, has authorized just this such a thing. So, for example, somewhat recently, the board actually approved the subdivision for Heather Lane, which is off of Chestnut Street, and as a part of that, the board authorized the creation of a 10-foot wide strip running approximately 90 feet long, that avoided the application of the minimum required lot width for one of the lots that was essentially at the corner of Chestnut Street and Heather Lane. Similarly, back some time ago, I think in the early 2000s, the board also authorized the creation of a strip of land that was 10 feet wide, about 254 feet long, in connection with the Woodworth Road subdivision, and that was actually created in that situation, not to avoid the application of the lot width requirement, but so as to avoid creation of frontage for an adjacent lot. While it's, while it's a little bit different, it still stands for the same proposition, that there is nothing at all untoward in creating non-buildable parcels to avoid the application of certain provisions of the zoning bylaw. But beyond that, there's also an inherent problem with the bylaw, if in fact, you can't create these parcels. And although it's not quite as clear in the SRA district, where, you know, in the acre zone like this, it's better seen in the SRB or 10,000-square-foot zone. In particular, if you can't create a non-buildable strip for a, for a lot or piece of land that is on the corner of two streets, that is effectively forcing you to have frontage on two streets. And even though that would be the effect, the definition of frontage at Section 1.3 of the bylaw specifically and clearly states that no lot shall be required to have frontage on more than one way. So if, in fact, it is patently impossible to create a strip to prevent the application of the lot width for corner lots, then it forces in all instances dual frontage on all corner lots, in violation of the definition. So there would be an inherent inconsistency in the bylaw. So, when you put all this together, I would say that the better interpretation and the better application is to continue to apply the past policy and practice, and to say that you certainly can create non-buildable lots, as long as they are clearly so designated on the plan, so that there is no confusion down the road that they are buildable. And in fact, there are many cases with respect to approval of not required plans that raise this exact issue, that say that you can create non-buildable lots, but they have to be clearly identified and labeled as such on the plan, so as to avoid confusion down the road in the future. So that, that is probably the biggest legal argument that the neighbors have raised, that obviously we disagree with substantially. But I'd also like to address some of the other comments that they have put forward with respect to these revised plans. So, so next up, there's an objection that the revised plans, that the by-right on the revised plans doesn't constitute a by-right, because that curve that we put in, they say, violates the requirements of Section 3.3.4 of the subdivision rules and regulations. However, that is a gross misreading and misapplication of that section. That section deals with the intersection of streets. It does not.
It does not.
The provision, the actual layout of roads within the subdivision. In particularly, if you look at the entire language of that section, it doesn't apply at all. But rather, the provision that applies to the layout of streets is the preceding section at 3.3.3, which clearly states that, that streets that have curves have to have a required minimum radius of 100 feet, which are little curve that we've put in fully and completely complies with, both in the as-of-right, as well as the proposed lotting plan. Similarly, they, they object to the placement of the sidewalk on the as-of-right plan, saying that it is too close to the neighboring property. However, there is nothing at all in the rules and regulations that specifically indicate or require the location of the sidewalk. However, to the extent that there is any such requirement, the closest you get is the typical or standard cross-section, which would actually call for the sidewalk to be right up against the neighbor's property, which obviously doesn't serve any purpose. So therefore, the sidewalk is within the framework of the rules and regulations. The, I also have some comments with respect to the technical review that was done by the, the environmental engineering company, but I am mindful that the Needham Engineering Department has not completed their review, and therefore, given the late hour and the number of items on the board's agenda, if the board is likely going to continue this hearing, in any event, I will hold off on addressing those comments at this point, but I will defer to the board, because I'm prepared to address them if the board likes to hear the responses.
Mr. Jenta, I appreciate that very much, that, and I think it's, the other board members will probably agree with me, that there's no point in getting into the competing, the comments made by the Butters engineers compared with the applicant's engineer with regard to the drainage, et cetera, until we have our own town engineer looking at it, and that we would continue the hearing until that time. However, I don't necessarily call, you know, look for a vote to continue the hearing right at this minute. I want to give board members the opportunity to respond on these issues that were in the letters that Mr. Jenta spoke of, and if the, if anybody is attending, or I didn't see any, any representatives of the Butters on the participants list, but if there are any attending, I want to give them an opportunity to speak. Not about the drainage, we're going to put that off. So, is there any planning board member who wishes to address the issues that are having to do with the by-right plan? Those type of issues. At this time.
This is Marty Jacobs. I do note that Attorney Lilienthal is one of our attendees. If he wants to say anything tonight, since he's with us, he can, but I, since we're going to do this again, I'm sure he could be heard at a later time as well. So, it's up to you, Madam Chair. I just, I just note that he's on our attendees list.
I see. Well, I think if he has taken the trouble to come in and wish to address us, we should give him that opportunity. But I do hope that Mr. Lilienthal will realize that we are under some time pressure, and we certainly will listen to him when the, when the hearing is continued. But now, Alex Cle, can you allow Mr. Lilienthal to speak?
Sure. He does not have his hand raised, but I can allow him to talk if he raises his hand. You can unmute yourself, Mr. Lilienthal.
Thank you, everyone. Gary Lilienthal from Burncoff Goodman, as you know. We also have on this call, one of the partners at Burncoff Goodman, with me, Bob Stetson, who, if I had technical difficulties, would have stepped in, and Carlos Sculte, the professional engineer from Civil and Environmental Engineering Consultants, is on this call as well. I certainly will. First of all, I intended to be briefed, no matter what, but I certainly, in light of the fact that the town engineer has not commented, I would ask Mr. Sculte if he had anything he wanted to add. I would ask him to address one thing only, but as far as the other things, if it is the intent of the board to continue again, we would defer and wait. I would like to point out that we disagree with, with Mr. Jenta's summary of the case regarding the parcel rather than lot. We, we, we believe we have very well briefed the law on, on this parcel being a fiction, and that it serves no distinct purpose from the use other than to separate Lot 1 from Grove Street to keep it from being a corner lot, and that solely is the purpose of it. All of the other purposes, including drainage, could be, could be handled by easement, and there, there really is no basis for it. I think the reference to Heather Lane is, is, I don't want to use strong words, but faulty, because there was no discussion, from my reading of all of those decisions, and I did read all of those decisions, of the fact that the parcel alleviated the need for the measurement of a width of a corner lot. It just, from what I could tell, went by without discussion. If I'm wrong, I stand to be corrected. I do think that there are still things yet to be resolved with this plan. We thought there would be a decision tonight, and that the plan would stand incomplete, again, deferring the engineering. We also, according to Carlos, and I would like him to, if you don't mind chime in, to talk about this reverse curve, and again, George has made it clear, his reading of this, I'd like Carlos to have the opportunity to, to address briefly his reading of this. We think the way this plan stands with its deficiencies, with the corner lot problem, and with the reverse lot issue, that, that a decision tonight should, should deny it. We, we, we think that George has proved our contention, that the allowing of these so-called parcels will create a slippery slope, and his reference to Heather Lane shows you that that's the intent, and that you have the discretion to see things for what they are, and, and prevent them from, from ignoring your bylaws and rules and regulations. I also note that, other than attacking our brief generically, which was contained in our November 23rd letter, and, and no matter what venue you write a brief for, outside cases are well-recognized as evidentiary of how courts generally think of these issues. And likely, you, reason George and I have jobs is because you don't find everything right on point. You make, you make arguments out of facts. A preponderance of evidence is created by a great number of satilla. So, you know, we put together what we think is a very cogent argument, and George had the liberty to rebut it other than generically. And with that, I'd like to ask Carlos, who was going to be briefed with your leave, Madam Chair, and the rest of the board, and Lee and Alex, to just let Carlos say if he has anything to add, and especially on the.
And is Mr., is Carlos, and I want to make sure I get, get his last name, an engineer or another attorney?
No, he's a professional engineer. He's a licensed professional engineer.
Okay.
And he has corresponded with the board as well.
All right. All right, Carlos, I assume I have your last name somewhere in the record, or maybe you'll say it now.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Oh, Carlos. All right, excuse me. It's Carlos Sculte. All right, yes, we can hear you.
Very good. For the record, Carlos Sculte with Civil Environmental Consultants. So we've been working with the Butters and the section referred to for the street jogs. I'll just read it verbatim, and I encourage everybody to review it as well. You know, we feel it applies to not only street intersections, which this is a roadway that will intersect with another street, but also applies to the roadway itself. So it reads, "Streets shall be laid out so as to join or intersect as nearly as possible at right angles, and no street shall join or intersect with any other street at less than a 60-degree angle." We feel that it meets that criteria. They're coming pretty close to perpendicular. And then it further goes on to read that "street jogs with centerline offsets of less than 125 feet, streets of varying width and reverse curves shall be avoided." And in this particular case, the street does jog over approximately 30 feet from its alignment in the majority of the site with a reversed curve. So it's kind of two of those bullets identified as items that shall be avoided are in the by right plan and also in the proposed plan because they follow the same, same alignment and the same right-of-way layout. So that was, that was the main point. And I think as the applicant noted, there was a number of other items that came up through, through the review where I think there was discrepancies in some of the plans that would have been problematic had they been signed off. So I think there's just some additional work that needs to be done on the engineering side to review the feasibility of the drainage, as well as the size of the lots and the setback and the grading and everything that ties with that. So I anticipate that if you do continue the hearing, there would be some additional revisions that would be warranted in order to address some of those other items above and beyond this issue and the corner lot issue.
And looking at the report dated December 8, 2020, by Civil and Environmental Consultants, are the points that you just made orally contained in this report?
They are, yep. They are with references to the applicable sections of the subdivision regulations, and then the technical items as it relates to drainage, grading information on the plans. Those are also identified as well.
Okay, yes, I see that I did review that earlier today. All right, thank you. So at this point, unless the planning board members wish to respond to the issues raised tonight, do I have a motion to continue the hearing? And to a date? Lee, a date and time, please?
Yes, excuse me. I was going to say that the action deadline on this subdivision expires the end of January. If we're going to be continuing in this again, I would, I would recommend two things. One is a request to the applicant to extend this out now, we'll say maybe to the end of February. And maybe a continuation to the planning board meeting. Well, we could do it on the 4th, but it could be tight, or we could do it on the 19th.
Mr. Janta, do you think we need, if we need an opportunity to really talk about these, these issues, we better leave ourselves some time for it. How do you feel about a further extension and an extension of the hearing to the 19th of January?
Certainly no objection as to the extension of the applicable action deadline. As far as extension of the hearing, obviously, you know, sooner is always better, but, but certainly, as we saw tonight, I defer to the board in terms of managing the caseload and what the hearings are going to be, whether it makes sense to do it on the 4th or on the 18th or
Right. If we were to do it on the 19th, Lee, what would be the appropriate time?
7:30.
7:30.
If I might, Madam Chair, Gary Lilienthal?
Yes.
Lee, would that be the first agenda item for the planning board, 7:30?
Yes, that's my plan. I am, I have, gonna have a conversation with the planning board about having a special meeting on a zoning issue for the 14th. I'm hoping that they're going to agree to that, so.
No, but I just, I'm trying to be sensitive of, and this works for George too. I'm trying to be sensitive of the costs that the clients are incurring.
Yes.
Well, the only, the only outstanding issue here is that we have a, we're going to have a meeting on proposed zoning for Highway Commercial 1 and a presentation on some plans. And I'm trying to schedule a, a earlier meeting for that, and I'm anticipating that's going to go through. I'd say the 7:30 is safe, and then the planning board is going to be looking for an alternative for the purpose.
And at that 7:30 time, it'll be your first hearing on that agenda.
That would be the first hearing.
Yeah, so that should satisfy, I hope. All right, so.
Jean, you're breaking up again. You're breaking up.
All, if you take around the motion or so forth.
I'm in charge. Well, are you, can I, will you entertain a motion?
I will entertain a motion.
I move that we continue this matter till January 19th at 7:30 and accept Attorney Janta's request to extend the action deadline to the end of February 2021.
So seconded.
I have a second by Adam Block.
So we have a motion and a second along the lines that was discussed.
I lost all my power.
I just want to make sure I was back in time to vote for it, so. All right, is it time to call for a vote?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Mr. Jacobs?
Hi. By the way, the motion, I don't know if you heard it, Jean, but the motion was both as to continuing and extending the action deadline.
Oh, very good. I'm glad that was included.
So I'm an eye on both.
Very good. And Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so that is unanimous on the four of us. So we, we have an extension and we will see everyone again on the 19th. And look forward to the documentation of the extension.
And yes, and George will get us the, that request for the extension this week so we can record it with the town clerk.
Yes.
All right, so.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Oh, the same to everyone.
Thank you.
So now, boy, it's 10:13 PM. And here we are going to Children's Hospital. And the people we have presenting this evening for Children's Hospital are, I'll just go down the list as I have them. And say if you're here, Lisa Hogarty, Senior Vice President of Real Estate.
Here.
Attorney Timothy Sullivan of Goulston Stores.
Here.
Gerald Topping, Senior Project Manager.
Here.
Sean Manning of VHB Engineers.
Here.
Glenn Doherty of Tetra Tech.
Here.
Jeff Maxtudis of Beta Engineering.
Here.
And Jaclyn Centracchio of Beta Engineering.
Yeah.
And Attorney Robert Smart, also representing Children's Hospital.
Here.
All right, so what we have is a continued hearing on the Amendment to Project Site Plan Review Special Permit, the applicant being Children's Hospital and the property located at 66 B Street, 361st Avenue, 410 First Avenue, and 37 A Street. And and this hearing is a continuation from November 17, 2020. I want to start by, by mentioning, and I think Vice Chair Paul Alpert is aware of this, but other board members are not, that we had a slight concern, and Alex Cle discovered in starting to prepare the wording for a decision, that the legal notice that ran referenced specifically that a site, that a special permit was needed under a site plan review of section of our bylaw for a major project. But the legal notice did not expressly say that a special permit was sought for the use of the, the outpatient hospital, Children's outpatient hospital use. The notice, however, did refer to the application and give the information where persons could access the application. And it was clear from the application that a special permit for use was sought. So in thinking about this, I think myself that that this discrepancy does not render the notice deficient or so deficient that it requires re-noticing the hearing. But we did, we did want to point it out to other members of the board tonight. And we also let the applicant's attorneys know in case they felt it might be necessary to re-advertise. And they were of the opinion that it was not necessary and the notice was sufficient to alert the public, you know, where the property is, what was proposed for the property, and that the omission of the reference to special permit for the use was not fatal to the validity of the notice. So just wanted to put that out for everyone. So now we'll move to the substance of this continued hearing and, and give the proponents an opportunity to present the additional information. We had responses back and forth on the traffic review that we had before us at our last hearing. And I think that's essentially what's before us tonight. So who would like to present on that or whatever else is pending that you wish us to know about?
Madam Chair, Tim Sullivan, Goulston and Stores here on behalf of Children's. So I think you're right. We covered a lot of ground last time, including where we've been over the past year and what the project is and the modest changes and the relief requested and how we satisfy it. We were just left with traffic and some questions that Beta raised on behalf of the town. And we've worked since the last meeting to respond to those. I don't know if it makes sense for Beta to sort of confirm that and then we can, you know, go through the mitigation that we're proposing, you know, sort of above and beyond what's already in the special permit, if that. I know, Lee, we talked about that a little bit earlier, if that makes sense to you.
I think that would be helpful, yes. And I did note the mitigation in, in, in the response. And I think it would be good to have that put out for the meeting record here, too.
I think Beta's prepared to basically speak to that briefly. I just want to add, I think there's one other item I think we need to close out, and that was on the wastewater. And I think how you, how Children's is planning to, you know, proceed with that, whether or not you're looking at doing the mitigation yourself or whether or not you'll be making a contribution to the town that was called out, I think, in the town engineer's letter.
Yes.
So, should we hear from Beta first, then we can, we can wrap up with, with VHB and we can address that point Lee just raised?
Yes, I think that was, well, Jean, I think that was fine.
Yes.
Yes, I, thank you. This is Jaclyn Centracchio from Beta Group. I, am I available? Yes, I can share my screen. Okay. Everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, okay. Again, my name is Jaclyn Centracchio from Beta Group. We perform the peer review for traffic for the project. Since the planning board meeting on November 17th, as the applicant said, we've met twice and completed two additional rounds of review. My plan is to go over the outstanding comments after the second review, which correlate to the initial comments by number and the respective responses by the applicant. We had asked for the applicant to explain why the remaining three intersection volumes that are adjacent to the site and which were collected, the traffic volumes were collected at those locations, were not included in the future volume diagrams, and that the intersection should be included in the post-occupancy study. And the applicant responded that the intersection data was collected for trip generation purposes only, basically to collect the number of vehicles accessing the intersections, you know, present day. And the post-occupancy study would include those intersections per the Founder's Park commitments. Comment number nine was for the proponent to consider raising the crosswalk between 381st Street and the Garage B. Currently, it's not proposed to be a raised crosswalk, but the other two approaches to the intersection have raised crosswalks, so they were going to look into that. And if it was viable from a design perspective to raise that crosswalk, they were going to do that or look into other safety measures for the pedestrians at that crossing. I'm sorry, let's see. The full build plans did not show a three-way stop at the intersection of New Way and Founder's Drive. And it was shown in the interim plans, but not in the full build plans. And the applicant said that they fully intend for that to be a three-way stop or an always-stop at that intersection, and they will be including that in the design plans. As part of the mitigation, the applicant had said that they would adjust the signal times and the phasing at the intersection of Third and Kendrick to accommodate the additional traffic generated by the development, you know, through that intersection. And we recommended that those changes be made, you know, within six months of the issuance of the building occupancy permit. They agreed to do that and hire a signal contractor to make those changes and also to the six-month time period.
I'm sorry, did you say, did you say within six months of the building permit or the occupancy permit?
The occupancy, did I say occupants? Oh, the building permit. We said the building occupancy permit. They said the building permit.
It should be the building permit.
Yeah. Okay. So also, we had asked for the applicant to consider making other improvements at the Third Avenue and Kendrick Street intersection. They had committed to a $30,000 contribution for improvements. And we had asked them to explain how the $30,000 was determined. They said that the amount was to install APS at the intersection, which currently does not have APS, which is, well, it's two. APSs can mean audible pedestrian signals or accessible pedestrian signals. They are referencing audible pedestrian signals. And they agreed to contribute this amount within six months of the issuance of the building permit. And the final comment was comment number 28, which was, we were asking the proponent to realign the signal heads currently along Kendrick Street, approaching from the east and the west, approaching Third Avenue on Kendrick Street. The, the signal heads are not aligned properly. They, they should be centered into the, you know, as you're approaching, driving down the street, they should be centered in the travel lanes. And they're very offset. So they had committed to realigning those again, six months after the issuance of the building permit. And that's it. So that's just a summary of the final outstanding comments that we had and the respective responses by the applicant, which we find, you know, reasonable, and we don't have any additional comments.
I very much appreciate the way you've presented this, focusing on the, the key things that you had concerns about and that were responded to. Let me just ask a question for Let me just ask a question for clarification on number 26 on the pedestrian signals. I think you said, Jacqueline, that. It was uncertain, it was unclear whether we were talking about pedestrian activated signals. Or audible pedestrian signals and what they're talking about is audible pedestrian signals. Could you explain what what that means and whether it wouldn't be preferable to have pedestrian activated signals?
So the difference is the audible pedestrian signals versus the accessible pedestrian signals. So. It. It would be more beneficial to have the accessible pedestrian signals. Those are the signals that not only have the audio, but they also have the vibro vibro tactile. Arrows. So basically the arrows to to so when. An impaired person hits the button, they can feel the direction of the arrow and know where the crossing is. And those are usually aligned parallel to the crossing, which helps guide them. So that would be the. Preferable option.
And it is there, there's no difference in cost of.
So there's a slight difference in cost. I had done a preliminary estimate and. That was based actually on accessible pedestrian signals with those, there's certain clearances that need to be met. Versus the accessible or versus the audible pedestrian signals. I don't know why they both have the A's and it gets a little confusing. So, you know, I did quickly look at the intersection and what would be needed for the accessible would be more of. Additional concrete to provide level landings. I believe it was just the southwest corner that may need that. So that would be part of that effort. And also, one thing I forgot to mention was the. The spacing of the push buttons, those need to be a minimum of 10 feet apart. Unless there's a, you know, extenuating circumstance.
All right, but now I understand better. I appreciate that. So whether it's the audible pedestrian signals or the accessible pedestrian signals. The intent of either is to. To enable persons with a handicap to hear the signal that it's gone on, even if their distance vision isn't that great. And also to feel that they have touched and set the thing going. It's for for to to help people with with their disabilities. Okay, I understand that now. All right, thank you. So. Is. Is there any any additional input? We need. On this traffic. System of I think somebody was going to speak in general to the various post construction. Studies that would be done and. And. Mitigations that would be. Done. Was that addressed sufficiently in 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 your presentation, Jacqueline, Jacqueline, or somebody else going to address that?
The post monitoring study?
Yes.
Yeah, any of the comments that we had made about the post monitoring study, they had said that it falls under the Founder's Park umbrella. And that which, you know, prior commitments by Founder's Park Development.
So we're satisfied on that, that we have those commitments for the post.
So I couldn't find. I I actually couldn't find any of the specific locations that were going to be studied. But since they had, you know, said that was part of the Founder's Park Development. You know. I.
I think I from my conversation with the town engineer, the town was satisfied.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I think then is it right? Unless other planning by members have questions or need clarification on anything. It is to address the stormwater mitigation or payment.
I I think Children's was going to present their proposed mitigation.
Well, that's what I that's what I meant about the proposed. Are you talking about stormwater mitigation or traffic mitigation?
Traffic mitigation.
Oh, okay. Okay, I thought that might be the case. Yes, who's going to speak on that?
So Madam Chair, Sean Manning, I I I'm going to walk you through. I think we're going to find that, you know, what I have to say is is somewhat repetitive to what Jacqueline went through. But I I will be brief given. The time of evening, I know the board has put a lot of time into this hearing tonight, so I'm going to share my screen. And can folks see my screen?
It's hard to the the writing is rather small. Can I?
I'm trying to make it bigger. How's that?
Primary, that's much better. Thank you.
Terrific. So so essentially, as part of Beta's review, that they had identified a number of things that Jacqueline went through. And and we're essentially repeating and concurring with their findings that I'm going to kind of group these together. So so certainly at Kendrick and Third Avenue, which was one of the intersections that the Children's Project does have some incremental impact. We've done some supplemental timing of phasing analysis and and we've come up with a plan that does adjust that timing and phasing at that intersection. To optimize and and help better manage queuing on the side streets during the peak period. So. We're looking to do a number of things at that intersection, all within six months after issuance of of a building permit. So all these things would be done at the same time, including making those. Timing and phasing modifications. Better emphasizing the fact that the the Third Avenue approach to Kendrick that we can. You do have two lanes, you've got it, you've got a general purpose through left turn lane and a right turn lane. Opportunity to add some additional right turn indicators to help people understand that that right turn lane is there. That's a that's a. Paint slash thermoplastic improvement. And of course, fix the signal heads, which, you know, is probably the most pressing thing to get done. If they're a little cockeyed and it's hard to tell when a when a light is green or red, obviously, we want motorists to be able to see that. And then and then finally, the contribution to supporting pedestrian improvements. So so this location, when when Mast OT added the lane to 128 and did improvements both on Highland and on Kendrick. They elected to keep the signal equipment as is. They didn't, they didn't make an investment and improve that equipment. And, you know, while while it's not certainly brand new, it seems to be in decent shape, but what we saw was an opportunity. To again, you know, help visually impaired, have a better opportunity to cross the street with some improved. Pedestrian indication technology at the intersection and $30,000 should be sufficient to to do that. Moving over to Fourth Avenue, which which was a location. That Beta had also identified, we're we're essentially committing in the future to doing a full traffic signal warrant analysis. And a roadway safety op audit. This this is an H SIP location. We're we're about to go through the MIPA process with the state and Mast OT has identified that. And what we would like to do is find a time that's that's suitable to the town and to Mast OT to doing both of those things to understand long term. What might be the appropriate solution for Fourth Avenue? We did notice in some Aneadums of Traffic Safety Advisory Committee meetings that this was an agenda item and it's been raised as a. Safety issue in the in the past and and Children's is fully committed to helping and trying to figure out what the right answer might be for that intersection over the long term.
And Mr. Manning, just the timing on that. This is, this is related to the other two buildings that may be developed in the future.
So so we're 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 suggesting that this be something that be considered down the road. This is not a location that the that the children's building at 381st Avenue really has any impact on. At all. And. Finding a time that's mutually agreeable in connection with with the second building, which may be a few years down the road is is what we're suggesting.
Okay, thank you.
And then on page two, or some other more building specific things. Raised crosswalk from Garage B to 381st. We we have studied that and indeed, we're going to do that within our within our full contract document. So that is certainly viable. It makes a whole lot of sense and we're going to do that. The always stop was something we were always doing. I I think there was a plan in the application package where it wasn't clear. But 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 certainly trying to find ways to calm traffic and have pedestrian safety within the campus. Of Founder's Park are are things that we've been focused on from day one. So that indeed is is happening. And then there was also a comment relative to just understanding parking. Into the future parking demands and monitoring parking. And again, I that that's something we're very interested in doing, just knowing. The part parking is a huge issue from an environmental standpoint and clearly travel behaviors have been changing with a lot of the technology and transportation. And the social experiment that we're going through now, you know, seems like another factor that could be built into how folks travel into the future. Although, you know, Children's Hospital and 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 bringing kids to doctor's appointments, maybe something that you need to do, continue to do in person. Telehealth could be a could be a factor in that, but I think it's a little different than an office building. But nonetheless, it is something that that we are committed to studying annually and 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 reporting back to the town on. And then finally, from a TDM standpoint. Children's has a terrific transportation demand management program that they employ at their main campus in in Boston. And they certainly take those principles and they bring them to their satellite program, most notably in Waltham and and PBD. And and that's going to happen here in Needham as well, whether it's transit pass subsidies or shuttle buses that connect. The Needham Campus back to the main campus, but also to. Major public transportation nodes, understanding that we do have a population that that lives in Boston and will be reverse commuting here. And if we can get them opportunities to get here without driving and parking, you know, we're going to try to do that as best we can. So excited to implement that in connection with the project as well. And I think the intention is for this to all be built within. The decision. And of course, if the board has any questions or comments, happy to help answer those. So thank you.
Are there questions or comments from members of the board? Regarding to these mitigation commitments and timing or to any of the issues that Jacqueline presented earlier?
I don't have any comment. I'm actually quite satisfied with the mitigation measures discussed.
Okay.
Same way.
And I should mention. Oh, I know that that this is actually leading into the the third thing that's to be discussed. And that is, I do want to mention a letter dated December 14th to the planning board from Thomas Rider, Assistant Town Engineer. Regarding. The. It had to do with his review of the traffic peer review and the traffic response, but also on the Founder's Park sewage flow comparison dated. On November 16th, 2020. Any comments on the, as they often do on the NIPD's requirements for public outreach? But more specifically on the applicant having submitted a flow comparison chart of differences between the buildings, the sewage flow. And saying that the applicant will have to remove four times the amount of infiltration inflow from the town sewer system. In accordance with DEP requirements or would have to pay $8 per gallon. And then he multiplies that out, it would equal $132,000 to the town for the town to remove the infiltration inflow. And that the applicant applicant should document to the town and how they propose to proceed. And with regard to the transportation impact. Our town, our Assistant Town Engineer says. We agree with the findings from VHB and Beta per the December 10th, 2020 VHB response document provided with no comment or objection. So who is going to address the? This the sewer infiltration inflow requirement issue?
But I can take a shot and then if I get it wrong, other members of the team can can help me out. So, you know, again, this is a project previously approved. So there's three building pads left. We're, you know, we're looking at 381st Ave. And then there's two offices. So the delta that was discussed or that was identified in that letter applies to, you know, complete build out. So 381st Ave would not exceed the INI mitigation that was already provided. So my suggestion would be that the, you know, if if the board approves the project, that there be a condition. That says that we would, you know, prior to being able to move forward with whichever building would trip that, I think it's the third, third office builder. Or the, you know, the third development pad, the second office building that's left, that we would either have to make that payment or do a project. You know, acceptable to the town engineer.
Okay. Board, here's that proposal that any such infiltration inflow project or payment would be made in connection with the. With the additional buildings, but not with this one, because this one does not exceed the comparative sewage flows. Any response or a question about that proposal?
Well, a question to Lee, I guess. Lee, do you understand that proposal to be consistent with what the town engineer is telling us?
I would, I, this is the first time I've heard that specific proposal and I think that. I I would need Tony's input on it just to make sure that it's okay.
All right. To me, if it's okay with town engineer, it's fine. But I I don't quite necessarily read it that way, but it's not at all clear, so.
I would need some input from him as to whether or not that that's acceptable. I I don't know the answer.
Lee, was this the only outstanding issue? And if not for that, we would be prepared to close the hearing.
Yes, I believe that that's.
On this application. Could we possibly close the hearing with the exception of obtaining this input? On this. Whether that satisfies satisfies the town's requirement?
Yes.
Right. Are there further questions or comments by board members? Or is it the time for a motion to close the hearing with that with that one exception?
So moved. Second.
All right, then. The record showed exactly what I said the motion would be and was made that way. So now. I'll call the roll on that vote. Marty Jacobs.
Hi.
And where is everybody? Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye. So we have unanimous for vote for member vote. To close the hearing with the exception of of getting import from the town. With with regard to the proposal on on the timing of. The sewer inflow infiltration mitigation payment or work. All right. And so then, once we are satisfied on that point. Will. Schedule, you know, this will be on the agenda for a decision. Do you have an idea, Lee, when this will be on the agenda for a decision?
Will be on the agenda first on January the 4th, so I'm planning 7:15.
Okay, and this will not be a hearing unless for some reason, there's a reason to respond on the very one issue that we left outstanding. So, okay, then we're all set with that. We. So thank you, everyone who's appeared for Children's Hospital at the several hearings. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays to you too.
And so we have a couple of other things on our agenda. To address. Let's see now. Yep, Lee, Lee, are you going to report on where we are with the highway commercial one rezoning and planning study? And I think Alex had sent around. A tentative schedule. Do you want to address that?
Yes, so I had hoped actually to have Natasha's formalized proposal for you tonight, but it's. I I don't have the final from her yet, so I I can't go through that. But it is the framework that we talked about earlier, which is to model. The existing situation under the existing zoning and then to model the as-built zoning. Or excuse me, the as-of-right zoning. Or excuse me, the as-of-right zoning at an F A R of one with the site plan and aerials and street perspectives. And then to model the full build out at the special permit of one point three five. Again, with site plans and aerial perspectives and street perspectives using two models for the as-of-right and the special permit. One is a combination of office, corporate office and research and development and retail, and the second option. Incorporates housing into the modeling. I put together, I tried to put together a tentative schedule of how we could move forward. Looking at the drop dead date, which is when the zoning is due to. It's the selectmen basically on March, the end of March and working back to see. If it would be possible in a really tight schedule to squeeze a community meeting in. This is, it's, it would be possible, although very tight, if we did a community meeting. I think I gave you the schedule on February the third. But essentially, it creates a framework where we're getting the drawings from Natasha and having a meeting on them around. The middle of January and then we're proceeding with a community meeting, the first of February. And then the zoning stuff, whether we have a community meeting embedded in here or not, has to be in by February sixteenth to start the zoning process. So it's really a question of how we're going to use the time period during January to the middle of February. In terms of reviewing the drawings that Natasha's developing and whether or not you feel comfortable that. That time, whether or not you feel comfortable doing a community meeting in that in that context, it's extremely tight. And I had hoped to get a confirmation from Natasha that she could live with this schedule, and I haven't gotten a final sign off from her yet. But if we were to do it, these are the dates that we would have to be looking at. We would need to be looking at getting the drawings, I think, from her by. The January the eighth, we would need to have a planning board meeting, a special one, I would think on January the fourteenth. At after which we would need to be advertising for the community meeting and a presentation on February the third.
And. Would the planning board essentially be the sponsor of this community meeting? I know there was some discussion, and I don't know if anybody approached Adam about the Needham Heights. Neighborhood Association having the meeting. Would you like to speak to that?
So I. I I would say that if it was the will of the board to do a. A community meeting, I would expect the. That the Needham Heights Neighborhood Association would.
Adam, we lost you.
Yeah.
You know?
Yes, we hear you now.
I seem to have an unstable internet connection. So I I was just saying that I think that the Neighborhood Association would. Would welcome the opportunity to host. In a kind of in a Zoom model, obviously, but somewhat similar to what we did at the last one. One question that may come up is. You know, should I have someone else from the Needham Heights Neighborhood Association? Chair that or run that meeting?
Yes.
Like, what's that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, you know, I I have to, you know, confer with the other. Executives on the or the other board members to find a volunteer who could chair that. I'm not sure there are any that are as well read on the issue, so they would just, I guess, be opening the meeting. And then, you know, throwing it to us to present and to perhaps Natasha and others. And then call for comment and feedback from the crowd and then effectively adjourn the meeting.
Well, it's the calling, it's the. Calling of comments and organizing the comments. I think that is most important for a good moderator to be able to do. If you have somebody you think would be good at that.
I I'll check with the with the board. I'll send an email out. It may, it may take about a, you know, four or five days. It may be next, you know, into next week before I get. A definitive answer. But I'll certainly put the word out.
If it didn't seem feasible for the Needham Heights Neighborhood Association to host this. How else would it be hosted?
We, you, this, this board would have to host it. I mean, we would have to advertise a community meeting. We would have to. You know, if if we, normally when the planning board does a community meeting, I mean, we invite town meeting members. So emails go out to town meeting members to tell them about it. A written invitation goes out to the the surrounding neighborhood. This is how we did it the last time. So that they all know about this community meeting and when to zoom in and and participate. And then it's a presentation, it's a planning board indicating that, you know, we're considering going forward with this rezoning effort. With this, this, this is what we heard at the last town meeting about what the concerns and issues are. And it's a presentation perhaps of the urban design plan from Natasha. It's a presentation by. G P I of the results from the traffic study. And then it's kind of opening that up. You know, for people's questions and comments on it. And then that essentially informs what you do. With the zoning, which you actually have to write and hold a hearing on. I think the question is whether or not. Have we gotten that information already? I mean, did we get that information from the meeting that we held? After time meeting when this thing failed and we went back to the community and we were hearing, you know, concerns about traffic. We were hearing concerns about the F A R. And now we've adjusted those things. So. Is there's what, you know, is there something to be gained from a community meeting? I mean. I mean, has can can in a sense be an educational effort. I mean, it can inform people on what's being considered. And it gives you a chance to rethink if there are issues that surface now that didn't surface when we held the earlier meeting.
However, if those, if there are significant issues that may derail the immediate plan. You know, this particularly this schedule for a mayor June town meeting.
This schedule, I mean, this schedule is really tight. Putting the community meeting in there is very tight.
It seems.
Gene, do you think?
Sorry.
Do you think the league would consider hosting a meeting on this topic if? I can't get a board member from the Heights Association to agree to do it?
I know we have. You know, zoning in general is one of our interest areas. I'd have to, I'd have to, we have, we have our. Mid-January program planning meeting, but so a lot of energy is going to be going into that. I'm kind of thinking it might be hard to do. Two things, you know, pretty much exactly the same time. Though actually, we're talking about early February. I'd have to, I'd have to ask Karen Price, the president.
Let me first check with the board and the Heights Association, and then I'll circle back with everybody.
Yeah. It seems to me, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, Lee. Is this schedule based on the bylaw being on the annual town meeting? And we had discussed the possibility that if it could be moved to the special town meeting, it might buy us a little extra time.
Yeah, this is based upon the annual, but I I reached out to Sandy and Kate and asked them, you know, what date I should be planning for. Because I'm not quite sure if how the special is going to work this year, and they basically told me I needed to, I should be planning. For a May annual town meeting.
Okay.
And that's, that's kind of what I've done here.
Okay. Got it.
Okay, I just wanted to say in response to Lee saying, we already essentially gotten the. Information we need from the community and responded to it in our changing of 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 the density and height and so forth. That. The one question that it seems to be out there and needs to be resolved before we sat down to finalize the language. In February sixteenth is, are we going to include housing or not? How are we going to get a response to that issue if not from the community? I don't.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
My, I'm not sure if my connection went sour again or not.
We can hear you, but your, your video was frozen.
That's probably.
But now you're not, you're going in and out.
I, I would think, it sounds like we wanted to be prepared to be able to. Present both options. But I think we really resolved that the zoning would be. Would tend to. We would tend to favor zoning for the office slash R and D retail as opposed to the. Residential option, the, the residential consideration was an option that we would explore. And it was, I thought. Correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, that. The joint committee between the select board, the planning board and FinCom. Wanted it as an option, but that that would not necessarily be. The included in the zoning itself. Unless it was.
That was really a decision the planning board had to make. I mean.
So.
Well, it can't be an option unless it's in the zoning.
Which we have to propose.
In this, it could be in the zoning. And then after the public hearing be taken out, we couldn't very well tuck it in later.
The zoning would have to be written to include both options, I mean, to enable the housing. And then after the hearing on on the zoning. You would make a decision based on what you heard at the hearing, whether or not you wanted to keep that component in.
And so the option, community input before we draft the zoning. We would get, we would kind of get a response on that issue.
Looking at the purpose of the community meeting, not so much for us to get feedback from the community. Because as Lee has been saying, we got that already. We got the feedback. I see this as our opportunity to go to the community and tell the community. We listened to you, we heard you, this is what we came up with. In response to your concerns that you told us about, so that the community would have that well in advance of town meeting. So that we don't get people showing up at town meeting going, you know, this is all new to us. How do we know that our concerns have been? Have been addressed. And so I I'm. I'm not so clear that we need to have such full-blown presentations, because that's going to take all. If we have a presentation from Natasha and then another presentation on the traffic study. I mean, the traffic study presentation to our joint meeting with the. With the select board and the FinCom took a long time.
It would have to.
You'd have to be there all night.
It would have to be truncated. I mean, it has to be a well managed, it would be a, it would be at most. Ten minutes on traffic and ten minutes on the, and that's actually a lot. It should be maybe ten minutes on that. Five minutes on the sketches from Natasha and with an overview at the beginning, that's probably three to five minutes. Of. Maybe a tad bit longer to kind of restate the history, demonstrate that when this was initially considered. Through the C E A many moons ago, that it was an even much wider geography. That it was a much wider density and some other substantial differences. That that went through a public process and and through the planning board. The planning board made some substantial changes. Those that led to the last town meeting. So I think we would reiterate a tiny bit of the history and we would. Discuss what were, what the changes are between then and now. And then move into traffic and sketches. And then, but Paul, there's no way we can, as much as we intend this to be. An informational session of us conveying information to the public. There's no way that, you know, we're not. We can't expect that we're going to have comments, feedback, criticisms and questions, which is fine. That'll happen also at the public hearing.
Yes, I expect it, but as I'm saying. I'm agreeing with you. We want to have a short presentation that says, we heard your concerns. Here's what we came up with. For, you know, we've included housing. These are some. Schematics to show you what it would look like. We had a traffic study. Traffic study in summary came up with these suggestions or these conclusions, I should say. These conclusions and maybe some suggestions, mostly conclusions, I guess, but you're right. Ten, ten minutes tops.
And what are we going to say about residential?
We're going to have a discussion on January fourteenth. I think we're going to have a discussion among the five of us. As to whether or not we're including residential. I think we need to make a decision on on that.
What if we?
I'm here, I'm personally in favor of including residential. I'm hearing that there are some of you who may not be. I think we need to have that discussion. We need to have that vote, and I think we have to do it on January fourteenth.
Well, I don't know if we need to do on January fourteenth, but we certainly need to do it. Because at the community meeting, you could, you could present it as an option and hear what people have to say.
I I would, I would propose.
I'd like to do that, actually.
But.
I want to hear what the community says.
Why is it that we, why is it that we're not, why is it that we're not doing the community meeting and someone like Adam? And his role in the planning board, doing something, you know, comparable to what you did for the heights, which is the introduction piece. And Natasha and G P I being involved in that.
I I I don't, I would not expect, can you guys hear me okay? I, I would not expect a member of any organization that would be as well read as we are on the details. So they would just open it, open the meeting, give a thirty second thing about the association. And then, you know, welcome everybody and then throw to us, then we would effectively run the content, you know, the content. And. And then they would close out the meeting.
Yeah, Adam, it sounds, Lee, it sounds as though you're thinking that just having the. Having essentially you organize it as a planning board. It's really almost like a hearing. We're calling it a community meeting, but it's, it's not a legally required hearing.
Well, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's different than what the hearing on the zoning would be. I mean, I think the hearing on the zoning is going to be like, here's a zoning proposal. And these are the range of uses you'll be able to allow. And here's the, here's the, what the F A R is and it's.
That is the same, though. If that was a community meeting, we would also talk about density. And go into some of the detail on this dimensional requirement. It's not like we would, in a community meeting, we would do less than that.
But I guess calling it a hearing gives it a kind of a legal status that we really don't mean, and so. But but Lee, I I think I hear you moving towards saying it would. It would seem to work better to just do it as a planning board, organized and sponsored community meeting and. You know, kind of, Adam, then your organization is off the hook, because, because you can't just do it. You have to ask somebody else. It's easier if we just do it. Is that right, Lee?
Well, it's a lot more work if we if we just do it. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm thinking about, you know, the notification to town meeting members. I'm thinking about the mailings that are going to go out to the neighborhood, but maybe we're doing that anyway, so.
I think we're doing.
I'm not sure that we are doing it anyway. This is, this is why I'm sitting here wondering if we're not doing it. Then maybe we don't have to go through. All of the requirements that you're setting out about sending out notices to all the town meeting members. This is a community meeting. I don't, why do we have to get involved with town, with town meeting members? From precinct C and precinct D, you know, it it's. If we're not running it, do we have to put a notice in the newspaper, which you're saying has to be done?
I'm saying if, if you want to get a lot of people to come to the meeting, if the goal is to inform the, is, well, what is the goal of the meeting? If the goal of the meeting is to, um, inform the community about what we're doing. You're talking about informing the town meeting members who are ultimately going to vote on this. You're talking about, I think, informing the neighborhood that's, that's, that's going to be immediately affected because there are butters. So you want to have those people aware of the community meeting. You want them to hear what the idea is and you want to hear what they're thinking about the idea. So the community meeting in a sense becomes the V, a vehicle through which you're communicating to, to the constituents about what the concept is. And you're hearing back from them about what their concerns are with it and where you might be appropriate thinking about adjusting it or not adjusting it. I mean, did we get it right? I mean, did we hear correctly a year ago what the concerns were? We, this is what we heard you say were the issues. This is what we did about it. Um, this is how we're proposing to go forward. Did we get it right? Tell us, do we, do we have it right? And, and who do you want to have listen to that? I think it's the town meeting members who are ultimately going to vote on it. Um, this is the people who live around, who live around the proposed development. Um, and the Heights Association that represents them.
Well, if the Heights were sponsoring it, um, you'd send an email to all your members, right, Adam? And wouldn't you have something in the newspaper about this important meeting?
So the, the benefit of the Heights Association running this, uh, or sponsoring it is, is several fold. One publicity. In addition to all the efforts that the town would do through Lee's office, we would, uh, post it on Facebook, which Cindy certainly could do. Post it on, uh, there, you know, the town information officer. We would post it on, uh, neighbor next door, which again, it's something that Cindy could do. Uh, or I could still do it. However, I'm happy to do that. Um, and I would also have it, uh, you know, request that it be effectively noticed in hometown weekly and, um, Needham times. So we'd have that, then we'd also have, there was, there was a benefit of the Heights doing it, I think, the last time. Because it, uh, it kind of cushioned the planning board a bit. The planning board was directly engaged, you know, with the, with the community and with the residents. And, um, and yet there was still a bit of a buffer as another organization that was kind of hosting this thing. So it didn't necessarily feel like you would have the same formality as that would otherwise be, you know, common in, uh, in a public hearing, but the purpose of this is a little bit different because the purpose of the first one was to understand more from the, uh, residents, you know, what wasn't really working. This is more us pushing them, uh, pushing content to them as opposed to us necessarily listening to them. There is a listening component to it. But this is really us relaying the newest information to them of what's changed and what we intend to go with. My, and because of that, it seems to me like it's very much like a public hearing anyways. I would be inclined to just proceed with the public hearing. And, uh, or, or the planning board just having, you know, hosting the meeting itself as an, as an unofficial, as a, as a non public hearing, just hosting a community meeting.
All right. It sounds that we're going in that direction. And Lee, is that, does that sound good to you? The planning board having this community meeting, letting the, I think certainly the town officials who would, were, um, were interested in this, uh, be, being informed of it and going on the town website. Um, putting something in the newspaper and, um, and I guess would moderate it the way we would any meeting, um, you know, whether I as chair would do so, or we pick a member who wants to take on that role, which I would love. Or Lee, or you, you sort of moderate it.
It, it, it's 10 after 11.
Yeah, we've got to make a decision and move on. That sounds like that's where we're going with this. Okay.
So did you see the schedule that I laid out? Um, we're talking about a special meeting of the planning board, um, on January the 14th. Uh, which is a Thursday, um, and they were talking about doing the community meeting on the third. And then the zoning articles would be due on the 16th of February. So I laid out a schedule. Those dates work on the front end. I need to get, I need to make sure, make sure she can meet these schedules.
Okay.
Okay.
My, just my thought would be that we, we're already going to have a public hearing. I mean, I.
Well, the public hearing will be on March the 16th.
I understand that. My thought is if we're already going to do a public hearing, is it possible to do the public hearing a little earlier? But failing that, because I see you shaking your head, Lee.
Not if you're going to, no, not if you know, not if you're going to do a community meeting.
Well, that's my point. Maybe then let's not, what if we don't do the community meeting and bump up the hearing a little bit, if that's possible, or just skip the, because at that point, the community meeting that we're hosting is tantamount to the same thing as a public hearing. The content should not really be different. And the outcome should not be different. We're just replicate, we're just, you know, repeating exactly the same thing. So on that basis, I don't know why we would do a community meeting regardless of who is ultimately getting hosted.
Well, that, that's kind of the question. Is that what we're going to do at the public hearing? We're going to have Natasha present all of the renderings? We going to have the, the, uh, presentation of the traffic study at, at the public hearing?
I don't think we need to.
Or are we just going to go through the bylaw?
I think, I think it's going to be a, a little bit of everything. I think we have to keep this, that meeting, the public hearing tight. I think we need to present to the public what the, uh, you know, the substantive elements of the zoning.
All right, look, I, I really need to end tonight's discussion. And we're on a tight schedule. So I'm going to say, fine, let's just do the public hearing. But let's try to get an incredible amount of publicity to the neighborhood. I'm focusing in on the people who live in that area of town because they're the ones who are concerned about traffic and about their lifestyle changing. And about their having what might be a monstrosity across the street from them. So fine, if we can get the Heights Association to help us with publicity for the neighbors. As I was trying to say before, the people who live in precinct C and D, I'm not concerned about them. If they're town meeting members, they're going to either do their homework or not do their homework and show up at town meeting. And be town meeting members like they usually are, which sometimes means they don't even look at it until the night of town meeting. Some people do their homework in time. The people I'm concerned about are the people who live in that neighborhood because if they're not happy, they show up at town meeting, they're not town meeting members, they're going to be sitting, you know, out in the bleachers and they're going to ask for the microphone. And if they're not happy, they're going to be vocal. So I'm trying to get them to hear us well before town meeting. So that they're satisfied that the project is something that they're going to be, that they're going to be able to live with.
So are we ready at a meeting that we might have, um, maybe in January 14th? To make a decision about the zoning, then advertise a formal legally required public hearing?
No, I think the, the me, the first meeting you're going to have in, in January, I think it's going to be Natasha showing you what the urban design plan looks like. So in other words, we have the traffic information that shows us this, with this, with this reduced FIR works. Now she's going to show you the urban design plans and you're going to have to decide if you're satisfied with that. And then after that, we can fiddle with, if you're happy with it, um, then we'll fiddle with the zoning. Um, so maybe two weeks after that meeting, after, at the beginning of February, we probably have, oh, we can have a zoning, we can be looking at what the zoning language looks like based upon what your reaction is to what she's, what she shows you in the middle of the month.
All right. So we're basically pushing ahead the date we make a decision about the zoning and the date we advertise a hearing for two weeks.
Right.
And we get a hearing two weeks earlier than we had planned by, per this schedule.
Well, more than two weeks, that'd be three weeks.
Right, can I jump in? I apologize. But, um, I just want to be, uh, respectful of the joint, you know, the joint committee. Because we should also, I think, probably factor in time, unless this does already. Factor in a bit of time for the joint committee. So we have support from both, uh, the select board and FinCom through the process. So they're going to want to, so, you know, they'll want to take a look at the, at the drawings as well. And also have further discussions about any other potential changes or other restrictions or whatever the case may be, even in the language of the zoning.
Well, I'm wondering if, well, would it make sense then to have the first meeting with Natasha, invite, invite them to that presentation as well?
Sounds good.
Any one meeting? So they're hearing it?
It's a Thursday too, so that it doesn't conflict with the select board's usual meeting, right? You're talking about Thursday.
Well, I'm going to lay out a schedule. If we're going to skip the community meeting, I'm going to lay out an alternative schedule, but right now it's Thursday.
All right.
That's tight for Natasha.
Yeah, inviting the select board, um, certainly, um, to that.
I'm going to leave.
Okay.
If you want to, I'm willing to make a motion to adjourn. Or I'm just going to leave and the three of you, you're still a quorum.
I'm going to do. I'm not, I want everybody to know, you know, for all the reasons I expressed last time, I think it's a mistake. I think we should have a community meeting, but obviously I'm outvoted. I know how Ted feels about it.
Not outvoted, because I'm the one who's been pushing for a community meeting.
Well, I have too, but you know.
You know.
It's, it's, but you know, I'm outvoted. I, I, I understand it. I, I can, I can swallow hard, just like Donald Trump, you know.
Marty, you and I will talk tomorrow about what litigation we're going to bring.
Yeah, right.
Because clearly this vote is rigged.
No, Lee has presented a schedule that calls for a community meeting.
Right.
Much about it and we thought maybe we can go directly to a hearing. But there's also, there's still support for a community meeting if that's what we want to do. Right?
I'm not hearing a lot of support, but that's okay.
Well, I thought we needed it because we need input from the community on whether we want to include housing in the finals.
Among other things, here's my problem, here's my problem. At a formal hearing, the focus is always on the language. I don't want the focus to be on the language with the community meeting. I want to know whether, as Lee says, did we get it right? Is this the right idea? At the, at the hearing, after it's preferred back, the focus is always different. So I think there's great value in a community meeting.
Can we, can we come to a consensus here that if we can put together a community meeting, we should, that we should follow the schedule that Lee laid out for us? Adam's going to investigate whether it makes, whether it's feasible for the, uh, name, for the Needham Heights Association to be hosting the meeting. He's going to get back to Lee right away. And if it's not feasible, Lee's going to begin the organization of a community meeting that would be sponsored by us.
It's fine with me, but I don't know if, I mean, I don't hear Adam saying that's what he wants to. I don't hear Ted saying that. So.
I don't hear Ted saying anything.
Well, no, last time he was quite clear. He thought community meeting was a waste of time.
Um, Marty, my, I, we can chat offline. I don't know if you guys can hear me. Did you lose me? Did I lose you?
I can hear you. Not tonight.
So let's, no, no, I won't call you tonight. Either we can chat here now or I'll call you tomorrow as well. Cause I, because I think the premise of, I think the premise of what you're looking for about getting it right from a community meeting is not entirely correct. Because, you know, the people that are the most vocal at those things are, are the opponents, not the.
Of course, always, always.
It's going to be impossible to determine whether we got it right.
Again, well, if that were true, if that were true, then nobody should ever have a community meeting.
Well, it depends on what the purpose of the community meeting is, but I, you know, we're.
So we're going in circles, guys.
Yeah, so let's.
We're going in circles. My purpose of the, of the community meeting isn't necessarily for them to start telling us again that we've got it wrong. And they want us to go back to the drawing board or they want us to keep going so that this never gets to town meeting. They want to drag it out for 10 years.
It's not.
The purpose of the community meeting is to inform the community because they're probably not going to show up at the formal hearing. And you're right, Marty, the formal hearing is a totally different animal because we're focusing in on the specific language that we've already agreed to. Remember, we're presenting something at the hearing that is what we've agreed to and we've noticed it. We've spelled it out in the newspaper. And we're limited by what we've already agreed to. We can pull it back, but we can't add to it.
And that's why people.
Community meeting is to tell the community, we haven't cast it in stone yet. We're letting you know that we have heard you. And, you know, this is, this is where we are before we present them with a fait accompli.
Well, that is, that assumes that you're willing to totally adjust the schedule to accommodate a period of consideration for meaningful change that may be advocated by.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not planning to make meaning. I'm not planning to make substantial changes.
Right.
I just, I just, I just want to communicate to the, I just want to communicate with the community in a, in an informal setting.
I, I, I understand that. And yet I do think that.
We lost you. Can't hear you.
What am I doing?
Lost your audio.
Cannot hear you.
Cannot hear you, Adam.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know what happened then.
Since I can't hear you, I'm going to agree with you.
Adam, I'm, I want to, I, I, we really have to end this discussion. And, but I don't want to end it without giving Adam and you an opportunity to, to just say what you want to say, Adam.
He's gone.
Kind of, you're going to call back in from.
You'll probably call back in, but you know, it actually sounds like we have three members who want a community meeting. And Adam's doubtful and Ted is against it from what everybody knows. So do you guys want to, I mean, when Adam comes back, assuming he does.
There he is.
There he is. Um, I was just summarizing. Uh, that it does appear that we have three members who see the value in a community meeting. That Adam is a little doubtful and that from what we know, Ted is thinking it would not be helpful at all. I, we ordinarily really like to have a consensus when we're going forward on something like this. So I don't know whether we, we should go forward with a three to a, a four to one or a three to two, um, on a community meeting. And just forget it, or we should go ahead because we've got three who want it.
Why, can I ask a question? Why, why can't we during a public hearing? Present, what prevents us from presenting sketches from Natasha and discussing the conclusions of the, um, of the traffic study?
Nothing prevents it. We could do it.
So it doesn't have to be a word for word of, of the, of the bylaw. And I don't know that necessarily needs to be. People can ask, it'll be noticed.
Legal, but that's legally the purpose of the public hearing.
Legally, isn't the purpose of.
That is to present the bylaw. That's the purpose of the public hearing. And we're not, and, and at the community meeting, we're not presenting the wording of the bylaw. We're presenting the concepts. But telling the community, this is, this is where we are on the concepts.
So the, but it doesn't prevent us from also identifying these other elements. And, and I don't know that it requires that we have to do a word by word reading of a script.
No, 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 no. The, the problem isn't that. The problem is that the people who attend a public hearing, if they see it's already in black and white, they think it's already a fait accompli and their input is. if they see it's already in black and white, they think it's already a fait accompli and their input is, is, has no value.
But that was my counterpoint to Paul before, because if the point is to inform them of the community meeting that we, of this is what we're intending. And we get, and we get criticism, opposition. And then two weeks later or four weeks later, we're presenting zoning in a formal way that's unchanged from the community meeting because we're unmoved by that.
But Adam, there's, there's opposition, and then there's opposition. Opposition could be from one person or two people or three people. If the whole room explodes against us, it's a whole different thing. There's always opposition. That doesn't mean you have to change everything. But if everybody is, is opposed, then maybe we need to pull the whole thing back and try again. It, it depends what kind of opposition and what opposition. And that you, you won't know until you get to a community meeting. I, I think. And, and really, a public hearing, you can add all the bells and whistles you want, but the focus is always on what's in black and white, the proposed bylaw.
You guys have the experience here. I'm the young buck, you know, you know, in for the rodeo.
Country lawyer.
So I appreciate the opportunity to, for you guys to hear my counterpoint. And I respect, I, I don't think, Gene, that we should be afraid of, of taking action without full, you know, five members agreeing on something. If three agree, that's the will of the board. And that's, that's okay. Doesn't mean we don't love you any less. It just means that on a particular item, we, we just, you know, disagree for different reasons. But I think we've hashed this out longer than any of us probably would have wanted to tonight. So if you guys are going to go ahead with it, you know, you know, I'm in with a band. So I'm there to pick up anyone's guitar and drop it off and you tell me where and when and how to play.
You're great, Adam. The, the, the question is the process. Do we want to see about having many of my neighborhood associations sponsor? Or do we want to make a decision right now to ask Lee to start organizing the community meeting? And Adam, you're the one who's the president, right? You're the president. So I really want to know what you think.
I mean, I, I, I have to just confer with the board to see if I can get someone else who can do the open and the extra. I can do the rest of it myself, that's fine. And in terms of the publicity, you know, and so it's just a matter of finding someone who can basically open the meeting and close the meeting.
So you, you're willing to give that a try and then get back to.
I'm happy to do that. And yet, if you want it to be just us doing it anyways, the Heights Association will continue to, you know, notice our membership. You know, and, and we're happy to publicize on the Facebook sites as well, other social media.
Well, fine, let's do that.
Prefer that we do.
Let's go that route.
Board sponsors, but gets a lot of help with notifications from Adam's group.
What we really need the Needham Heights Association for, I think here, is to help us get the word out to the Needham Heights folk.
I have to confirm, I have to confirm that the board will accept that, but I, I don't see them.
Please reach out to them, Adam.
We'll do.
And the legal voters would do the same thing. We, we willingly send around notices to our membership that are of interest to them. We certainly would for something like this. And I know that doesn't target a neighborhood, but it's.
Alex is back. That, that means we need to adjourn.
All right.
I second that emotion, I second that motion.
Before you go anywhere.
Is there anything else we need to talk about, Lee?
I just need to say to Paul, Ted has the MyLars.
I know, I've seen the emails.
Is it okay? All right. He was going to bring them to you tomorrow. Okay, okay.
Have him just drop, have him just drop it off either at my door or in my mailbox in the morning. I'm sure that's his plan is to do it in the morning on his way to, to North.
That's his plan.
Okay, perfect.
I'm, I'm going into Boston on Friday, so hooking up with you on Friday is going to be difficult. What I'd like to do is, tomorrow's Wednesday, it's not snowing till tomorrow night. If Ted can drop it off tomorrow morning, I'll sign everything and bring it over to Marty's porch and leave it on Marty's porch. Is that okay?
Love it. Thank you.
What did you say, Marty?
I'm, I'll bring it inside.
And you'll bring it inside.
If you need as a backup, I can pick up from you on Thursday and then on Friday, bring it over to the.
I'm not picking up anything on Thursday. It's going to be snowing like crazy.
I've got a Jeep and I'm Canadian.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We're doing a community meeting and I, and we're organizing it and Adam's group is going to help. Okay. Adam has to confirm.
All right.
We have a, we have a plan. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Which is non-debatable.
Motion to adjourn, anybody?
Second. Paul, Paul already did it. I seconded it.
Right. Marty.
Aye, aye, aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Adam.
Discussion.
Too late.
The chair is high. Hey.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thirty-two. Good night.